Alright, so. Good afternoon, everyone. This is April 10th, 2023, exactly 2:00 PM. I'd like to call this workshop to order. We do have, it doesn't look like we have all council in attendance, but we do have a quorum. Councilman Merrill, listen. So we do have a quorum and we can conduct business. Let the record also show that Towne Kirk Gray is in attendance. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
I would like to propose two amendments to the agenda. One is to discuss the asphalt plant and concrete break batch plant. And the other one will be to report on the items from the Financial Advisory Board back to the council.
Okay, so you could do that during a board discussion, right?
Whatever.
Alright, so we're adding asphalt to number 11 or just make it 12 and then. Yeah, make it 12 and then we'll recess. So that will be the, is it sun rock? Is that what we are deciding? I did not decide anything. I believe that.
I have no idea what.
They said rock expansion. And asphalt plant. Hey. This is Brian too, sorry. Yeah, I'm gonna everybody's wait, I do. So there you go, up at the table. Alright, so.
Move the, move the agenda as amended.
Okay, second? Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Get real. I saw her say aye, but we did not hear you, Rue.
Uh oh.
Now I can hear you.
Need to move closer.
Okay, thank you. Passed unanimously and that's with one amendment. Okay, um, could I next get a motion to approve the minutes? We can do it separately if the council prefers, one at a time or both of them for the 14th and 28th together, so. Is everybody good on this? Move to approves both agenda or both minutes. Oh, shouldn't, okay. Sure.
Rue. Sent some. Adjustments to the minutes.
So let's do, to both minutes?
No, just to the workshop minutes.
Which one?
Twenty eight, March.
Okay, so let's. So. Kristen, why don't you go ahead with your motion?
Okay.
But just for the 14th.
I move to approve minutes for March 14th.
Okay, second?
Second.
It's been moved to second and all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, hearing none opposed, motion carries. That's to approve the minutes for the 14th. Now, could I get a motion to approve the minutes for the 28th?
I would move. Through the minutes for March 28th as amended. Now, do I need to go over the amendments we made?
Yes.
Okay. Major amendments were under economic development. There was a general consensus among council members that the Economic Development Board may no longer be necessary. The Economic Development Board could possibly transition to become a new Public Safety Board. And Underwater Utility Board, Councilman Danny will speak with Water Board members to obtain their input. The Board's purpose mission, purpose selection mission going forward. Can I get them all real?
Yes, thank you, Taylor. Or Councilman Ellis.
Second, I know. I'll second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Um, I just want to open this up for comment. Normally, minutes are based on what we actually vote on and we didn't vote on either one of the these amendments. But it does say that we, I don't have it for me, you know, that we agreed.
That's okay.
Kristen, you have it?
That's the wrong one.
So hey, Rue, what, didn't you say any there something about the council agreed or the council?
Yes, you did.
I said there was general consensus on. Probably not needing the Economic Development Board.
There you go.
Okay, so because there was no vote taken, my concern, I'm just concerned with the word consensus. Does that make sense?
It does, yes. I think what my thought was is the, the minutes were. Not real detailed and I just wanted to make sure it was clear that Councilman Denny was going to go back to the water board and ask for their input.
I did that, so yes.
So can we clarify that then instead of using the term consensus? That would be, that's my issue.
Yep, no, that's fine, perfectly fine.
Okay. So. I don't know how anyone else feels. The other one I, I don't, the other one I don't have an issue with. Unless it uses the word consensus again.
I get a second.
Hold on, you cannot, you did get a second.
Yeah, who seconded it?
I'm just.
You want to withdraw your second?
Yeah, so we can just fix.
Always roll the motion.
Okay, so I would say take out the words consensus and. In there. Sorry.
Do you want to be second to you?
General discussion. Can we say general discussion and council members that the ED Board. May no longer be necessary and that the current ED Board could possibly transition to become a new Public Safety Board? So, sorry, what was the wording? Just take out the word consensus and put a general discussion.
Discussion.
And then the same with the, do we have seven, the second one too on the water board? No, just that one, okay.
Now I move to. Prove the. Minutes as.
Amendment.
Amendment, as suggested.
One second. That's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, hearing none opposed, motion carries. So, okay, those are approved. Budget 2324.
Okay.
Chairman?
Okay, thanks. Be welcome, everybody who's on the phone. Give me a sec, just to fire up the obligatory PowerPoint. Okay, we have a lot of ground to cover, but the good news is. The, I would say something like eighty-five percent of the goal setting and budgeting work is behind us at this point. And we still have two and a half months till the fiscal year kicks off to continue to iterate where necessary. So I'm actually very pleased with where we are. Very thankful for Kristen and the other town staff that contributed to the bottoms up budget. So I'll try and catch us up on where we are, what the financials look like, and then jump to the goals. And talk about how the budget reflects the goals or in some cases may not reflect the goals and see what we need to change as a town council to. To address that. So that's really the agenda for today. We'll go through a bunch of numbers. Stop me, please, because I hopefully just want to tell them for the next forty minutes. And then our marching orders out of this would be, I think there may be frankly some. Action required from the town council to think about what they might want to change in this draft, first draft budget. And then, of course, to take whatever those discussions are and give them to Kristen and others to go ahead and create the next iteration. I think the first ordinance reading is tonight. So, yeah, so the first ordinance reading is tonight. I feel like we're in good shape for that. There's a couple of things pretty much before the end of the year or start of the year and we'll continue to. Get better information and fine tune as we go through. So with that in mind, let's see if this works. It does, okay, cool. So the way I'm going to spend the next bit of time and you've had this PowerPoint, if you were lucky enough to get a chance to view it over your Easter weekend. We're going to go through a little bit of background on how the accounting works here. There are some complications to fund accounting. We'll talk about how we deal with those. There are some limitations of the quality of our data and systems because of the necessarily small effort we put into accounting here. Given our town size. And some other background information. I'll go through that and then we'll step right through the P and L. Start with revenue, look at expenses. Then say, how does it look in total when you take revenue and subtract expenses? Is there a surplus or not? And we'll look at our cash reserves. I have a new proposal and how to look at cash reserves that's in here for the first time that you'll see. And then some proposed capital spending come out of those reserves. And ultimately, we'll get back to the goals. So forward. So the first section will be the background information. So I'll try to get through these real fast. I'm hoping that maybe I'll have a chance to read these already. So the most important thing I would expect us to do as a group when we look at the budget is to get some answers in our head as to the context of it. Is it. Asking for a massive increase in spending or is it actually cutting down our spending? Where do we fall on that? What do the trends look like over time? How much are we planning to increase spending is usually one of the first questions or what are we going to get done in the budget? So we'll spend a lot of time looking at trend lines. There are, on the other hand, I think I actually said this to you. There's a massive Excel file that Kristen and the staff pulled together. That answers most of the detailed questions and I have it here. If questions come up, we'll pivot to it and dive into the detail in Kristen's mind and see if we can. Figure out what we were trying to accomplish in the detailed numbers. So we'll go through that as well. And lastly, as I've said, I think three times now, we do want to make sure we circle back and say, okay, is this budget aligned with the town goals that we spent a lot of quality time developing? Okay, a lot of small words here. Don't feel like you've got to read it, but the bottom line of this is fund accounting can be necessarily confusing. And it can actually be misleading if you take it in the wrong way. And I'll say, I'll try to explain simply. So I've taken fund accounting out of this for the most part. The reason is this, fund accounting always balances and they treat simply moving money from one fund to another as a revenue to the other fund. For example, if you take money out of the capital fund and move it to operations, it shows up as revenue when the operations stand. That's not really revenue. It's just taking stuff from one of our pockets and putting it in another one. And so I think that can be misleading because you might say, oh, look at revenue, it's up. But in fact, you just moved money out of your pockets to the other one. So we strip that stuff out. That's the simplest way to say what this slide is trying to say. We're only looking at revenues we get from other people outside of these, outside of this building. So what are real revenues from billing customers? Grants from state and federal loans are actually not revenue in a sense. Taxes, property taxes and so on. So it seems kind of obvious, but when you first look at fund accounting, if you follow to the letter of the law, you never have surplus. Everything always balances. If you have a surplus, you give it to another fund and if you need money, you take it from another fund and hey, look at that, our P and L balances. Not so simple and not very insightful, frankly, if you're trying to find out how we really do. So that's what this slide says. Couple of other important data quality and estimation things to keep in mind in here. We are, Kristen and I attempted to say how we think this current fiscal year will end. I find making predictions really hard, especially about the future. So we don't really know. How the next three months are going to turn out. We used everything we could to look at what tax receipts should look like over the next three months. We looked at spending for the next three months. We did our best to not spend weeks, but a couple of days going through and triangulating on what a good estimate is for this year so we could then compare the budget to. Where are we now? What's the budget asking for? So there is an estimate in here for FY23. That's a longer way of saying, if you say, well, why is 23 $184 instead of $480? The answer is, we don't really know. It's just a rough estimate. So. Think of the 23 numbers here as a rough estimate. The other thing to know is when I first got into the finance role a year ago, being an accountant and auditor by background, of course, I got everything I could find. I got audit reports going back several years, financial reports going back several years, budgets, blah, blah, blah. And every time I tried to see something and said, okay, that's tax revenue in 2019, I could find like three answers for it. And I actually created a giant spreadsheet to cover every single line of our 400 line P and L. Between what was in the audited financials and what was in the internal bookkeeping and what was in the budget. And suffice to say, I could find multiple answers for a lot of it. They were usually pretty close. A lot of times it was, not a lot of times, almost every time it was for some reason, right? An audit adjustment happened late in the year and they changed the numbers to be corrected, the signed audit report. But we didn't go back and change them in all the detailed accounting records because it was like a year ago and we didn't care anymore. So you'll find things like that even at, you know, bigger towns, bigger companies. We have some of that. So sometimes if people like to follow along in detail and pull up three years ago's report and say, Dave, that number's not the same, you're probably right. It's probably off by a little bit. And I found a bunch of that when I was going through it last year. Quick definitions and then we're off to the numbers. So I think everyone probably knows these, so just bear with me if it's repetitive, but revenue is amounts that are given to us from other parties. Customers, state governments, et cetera. Expenses are everything we pay, literally everything in this case, except. Capital items. So I have accounted for buying or paying for a big road project that's capitalized. Or building a building or something like that. That is in a separate bucket of things, which we'll look at at the end. But we look at just operating expenses at first to see, is turning the crank of delivering water to people. Spending less on that than we bring in from the water bills, for example, or is the town's general fund getting enough to pay for the operations of the road crew and everything else we do all year? Because obviously some years there might be a big capital draw for some project. We might not have enough in one year's revenues or the opposite, we not have one and then you're going to have too much. You just have to look at it on an apples and oranges basis. Operating income in here is just the path of that. How much do we bring in? How much do we spend? We have to make loan payments as we all know and then the net surplus or deficit for any fund is simply revenue minus expense. Minus any loan payments if there are loan payments like in the water business. And the surplus or deficit is the net of what's left. Any questions so far?
No.
Cool. Let's get to the numbers. Let's start with revenue. You're going to see this chart a bunch with these colors and this information. So I'll spend a minute on this first one and then I won't repeat it. I've labeled these at the top typically, whether it's general or water or both. So every slide would be, you'll see the same slide often, you know, three different ways, general total, both. Or general water. And you'll see those same four years. FY21 ended in June of 21, FY22 ended in June of 22. FY23 is that rough estimate we did for the year ending in about three months. And then the budget that's proposed is backed up by that detailed spreadsheet. So this is revenue for the general fund and. The first comment I'll make is at the bottom highlighted in red. Have we gotten the WAM since I last saw you? Okay, and we still don't have the WAM reports. And so these are boring estimates for the moment. If you look at the most important ones, the biggest ones, the first three items, sales tax, local revenue, property tax. For budget purposes right now, absent any other better information, we just set them equal to what we're getting in the current fiscal year. I personally have tried to keep tabs and I'm sure many of us do keep tabs on visitation rates and hotel occupancy projections and so on. Honestly, what I've seen is down from last year, but it's still early in the season and we shall see. So we'll see where those end up coming out. We'll get some information from WAM soon. Probably for the, I mean, certainly for the next iteration by the middle of May, I would expect to have something. I actually received today my inbox, my property tax assessments, probably many others did as well.
Yeah.
I have not had time to open them. I literally just got. They are up, so most likely property tax will be up again. I guess my personal. Hope was that they would not raise our assessments again as a property owner, but I think they're up something like thirty-five percent is what people are saying. And last year, when everybody got theirs, they were up fifty. That's pretty much what flowed through the town. So I think most of us will see the order of magnitude, the same size increases and it'll show up in the town as well. So those will be pretty predictive. So we will be able to clean up that 425 estimate with a real number in the future. Direct distributions, I think we talked about that as a group at least a couple of times in the last month. It's expected to be. And I think we feel pretty confident that it will be what they say, 300,000. That's about seventy-five grand from last year. Minerals, royalty and severance tax. There's, there's no real, again, we don't have anything from WAM, so we don't know exactly. Every year, they sort of macro senses that these are going to start to go down in this state at some point, but then they don't, as you can see the last three years.
Yeah.
But we need to be, I, my advice would be to be prudent when budgeting because if you budget for some big revenue increase that doesn't come in, you are in a problem that is very difficult to solve as the year goes on. We can't just sell more product like a company, for example, or do something creative. We, we would be in a real spot. So, you know, we just had it down a tiny bit. Same with vehicle tax and fuel taxes. We don't have any grants projected on the general side at this point. I think that's proving to be unfortunately accurate. And miscellaneous building permits, building permits is frankly the biggest number in there other than interest income. We're projecting that building permit income will come down. We are seeing frankly, council P and Z meetings, I presume, because they don't have a lot of work to do.
One home so far this year.
Wow. So.
It's correct this year, doesn't even count for next this year, so.
Yeah, and I don't remember what we did last year, close to four.
So we will take a very hard look at this even in the next couple of months to make sure we don't have too much in there.
Yeah.
But most of that's interesting. I feel pretty good about giving what we have in the bank and what we expect to be able to maintain in terms of bank balances. I won't be silly with regard to interest rates. We will be a little bit conservative because they are going to start coming down in the next six months probably. So I wish it were a more interesting story on the various components of general fund revenue right now, but we are missing the biggest piece of information in our budget cycle at this point. So let's put a stake in the ground and say, okay, it's going to be pretty darn close to last year as you can see. And let's move forward and see what that means to our town. Before we get to that, the town expenses and all that, though, let's quickly look at water. This business is actually pretty easy to forecast for the most part. Base fees went up two bucks, so that is going to go up. There's about a thousand accounts. That's $2,000 a month. That's $24,000 a year. Put it into your calculator, sure enough, eight ninety goes to nine fourteen, so it's about a $24,000 increase. Same with the base fees on inactive accounts. These are Dave's words because I could never make sense of the, of the account names we have in our system. They call it something bizarre. But base fees on inactive accounts are up twenty-four grand as well, but the same exacties. I feel very confident that those numbers will be accurate. Water usage fees, on the other hand, is something I put a lot of thought into before we put this up on the board here. I've changed it three times probably in the last two weeks. You know, it bounces around, obviously. It depends on nature and rainfall and water table and everything else as far as how much people have to water. This is the only major variable in our water business. We have 1.7 million in revenues and this is really the only one that can move around a whole bunch. At least as we sit here now, that we expect to move around. I put in two twenty because it's the average of the last three years. It seemed like as good a number as any. If it's really sunny between now and June, maybe we can raise it, but it's going to be somewhere close to that. It's not going to be like that. Late payment penalties. When I first saw this, I'll tell you, I was shocked. In the current fiscal year, we're going to do something like $170,000 in late penalties, which is ten percent of our revenue. And that is an enormous amount of money for any sort of service to have that much in late fees. And I thought, oh, there'll be something simple and I can just look at this real quick and figure it out. And the answer was, back in that. Kristen sent me the entire aging of everybody of the two thousand accounts. It's all over the place. And there are people who get behind and they do through our collections efforts, which is that Gina mostly or Jamie. Jamie, I think, is clearly doing a pretty good job of collecting those if you look at the amount of money we brought in. So it's not something that you can simply look at and say, I can sort this. There's something issue here. We're billing wrong or people, or there's a handful of people in trouble. It's not that easy. There's a lot of heterogeneous issues in that, in that population. So what do you do with it for budgeting? My gut says, don't assume it's going to be $170,000 again. Because it's either going to be or it's not. And if it's not, again, once again, you're in trouble. So we put a hundred in that because we think that's a great number that we did some giant spreadsheet we came up with. Rather, it's just, it's less than a hundred and seventy and it was a round number. I don't have conviction about what it should be, but I would, I would argue against budgeting it any higher. Meter and soft fees, same story as permits. Huge year a couple of years ago. I think most people might be surprised that 2023, the year that's finishing up in three months. Not very many.
Yeah, I think what happened is that the, the word was out that we were raising it and so we had a ton of people come in and pay and don't bury it this summer. And that's, that's why I was shocked at that number two.
They were planning on building, they came in and got it put in for the tournament.
And, and the. And so there isn't going to be much in this current fiscal year and I think any prudent projection would be, there won't be more than that next year. We got ten of them in there at $7,500.
So let me step in for a minute. We, we did pass a ordinance that requires the new owners to get their own meters installed. Did the whole, no, did the whole, put the sleeve in.
You're right, we did.
Is that going to affect this?
No, because we did that last fall. You know, it's still them paying a tax fee whether we do the work or they do the work.
On the revenue side, it doesn't impact us. It could impact our cost to do it, but this is just the revenue side.
Okay.
Yep. It'll take less time out of, out of really good teams to do it, but we still only get the seventy-five hundred bucks each time. Miscellaneous in interest is, is interest, you know, the water fund's got a couple million dollars in the bank and it's getting four and a half percent right now. So there's. Most, most of that is just interest, which is wonderful. So that's water. Now, you know, the revenue side of this town, it's not that complicated aside from grants, which we go out and we try to get, but on the operating side. What do we get from taxes? What do we get from water? It's pretty, it feels like it's getting pretty easy to project. There aren't a lot of big variables here. If there was groundbreaking everywhere, we have to spend more time thinking about permits and top fees, but we're not.
Hey, Dave?
Yes.
I had a quick question. On this slide and the previous slide, the, well, actually all of them, the FY23 estimate, that's the budget amount and not actuals to date? Is that right?
No, actually, good question. It's this estimate that Kristen and I prepared that I was speaking of. What we did was to, when we created it, we had all, everything through February. So we had eight months of actuals. For some of the numbers, we knew the March activity. So for some of them, like sales tax and stuff, we had March. And we took those actuals and projected them out to the end of the year. So it's, what is that, two thirds actuals? One third Dave's thumb in the air saying this is what it probably is going to look like. And to do that, we went back and looked at what the three months, the last three months of last year looked like. What's the seasonality of property taxes, for example? We know we don't get much property tax in the spring. So I'd say it's our best guess of what it's going to be. The budget, in fact, for FY23 would have been substantially higher. I think we budgeted for. A very large increase in costs last year, which prudently didn't all happen.
So we budgeted an income. Well, it's what, if you're to compare our budgeted income versus estimated income. I remember within five percent or so, or.
It's a good question. I actually haven't looked at that. And I could have, but I just haven't any time to go back and say, hey, how did 23 come out? I can do that offline instead of, you know, I just haven't done it lately, so I don't know it off the top of my head.
I think, I think look at the March expenditure or report. We're a little, we're a little bit above right now. Our income's a little bit above budget, but you know.
I'm sure it is, yeah. We, we, you know. I'm usually going to turn royalty here because I had nothing to do with it. I think at the, the town council over the last several years has been appropriately prudent with regard to conservatively budgeting revenues. And every year that I've worked at. And so I think we've always outperformed on the revenue side a little bit compared to what we had planned and I, I hope, you know. That we do that again this year because it's the only way to run a town with so few moving parts that you get penalized so greatly if you miss on a revenue. Nowhere else to make it up. Actually, that's a good question, though. I'll, I'll write myself a note to do that quick math because I have the data. I just.
Yeah, I think if I look at the general fund, right now, we're at eighteen. Income to date and we are eighteen fifty-three budgeted. For the year, so right now, we're, we're right at budget. We've got too much to go, so.
Yeah, exactly. I'm, I'm sure that that's the case. It won't pro rate exactly because property taxes, for example, have already all been taken, but I'll do that for you. I just haven't looked at it.
On the flip side, it's better off if we are conservative.
I think it's an imperative given the way our town works. There's just no other way to get revenues in the middle of the year or something. If you budget aggressively and you're, and spend to that, you're in trouble with nothing to do, nothing to fix it in my opinion. You know, commercial businesses, I can do lots of things to change the trajectory of a business in the middle of the year in town. I think it's a whole different kid. Any other questions here? Let's sum it up. So this is total revenues for water in the upper right. Total revenues for general, all that's doing is summing up what you saw by component on the prior pages. It's just the math. So there's total revenues for water, total revenues for general, for general. Add those together, you get total revenues to the town. I think, Ron, your point would show up in the far right table, that FY23 estimate of 4.1. I'm sure it's higher than the budget, but I'm just carrying. And, you know, more or less it's flat. If you look at the water, it's down twenty-four thousand. That's basically, you know, less. They pay the fees offset by a little bit better interest income and a little bit better than $2 per, or. Perfect base fee. And then the general side, everything's pretty well flat, except for permits, probably causing that, that small decrease in total. Okay, questions on the revenue side before we leave it? Jump over to expenses. Okay, so I look at expenses in total and someday, you know, I think we, we should aspire to being able to look at expenses in another level of delineation. We can look at it by water or general. And maybe even lower than that. I had a conversation with someone on the town council about potentially looking at other smaller buckets of activity like plowing, which is some of road maintenance or. Something else and capturing costs in that way. When you do those kinds of things, even today, when we take our expenses and allocate it between water in general, it's an allocation. When you do those kinds of things, even today, when we take our expenses and allocate it between water and general, it's an allocation. And as soon as we start doing allocations. Um, you end up in a quagmire of, well, is water up or down versus general, because we simply. Charge more of our time over there this year, or maybe the budget assumed one portion of everybody's time and the actuals are actually slightly different numbers. So rather than being able to quickly say, hey, are we spending more money or less money, you end up. Getting caught up in how are we squeezing the balloon of costs? Is it blooming over the water? Is it blooming over the general? And you get lost in the weeds of allocation. So I tend to always start at least looking at expenses in total for the enterprise, and that's what you're looking at here. This is total expenses uh for the town, not capital, just operating, as we talked about. And, you know, they've been marching up a little bit. The editorial I would make is that in my observation, the town was running. Very carefully in the nineteen twenty timeframe without expanding the town's. Spending levels. If you were to go back further, you'd see that it might have even come down frankly in the late teens, and it was probably pretty flat. Uh, and so you you did see a rebuilding of that from uh twenty one to twenty two. It was up twenty seven percent from twenty two to twenty three. It's gonna be up about twenty three percent. This is payroll. This is uh supplies, equipment. It's everything, except capital spending. Those are healthy increases. Um, I will also say that I was. Nervous last year. When I looked at the first budget draft last year, those that were on the council will remember. That Dave probably put up about seven slides that said we're planning to increase spending, you know, seventy nine percent or some crazy. Well, we didn't do that. We increased spending by about twenty three percent, far more prudently. Um, for this budget, it was a complete opposite. When Kristen and the team came back with. The uh total spending and it went through the mayor's desk and got to me, and it was only about seven percent. I didn't really. Massage these numbers. These are pretty much what the detailed budget says. We might have looked carefully at a few things, but not enough to make a big statement. So. From the F A B chairman job role, I would say. That's uh probably good, knowing that revenues are probably gonna be pretty flat this next year. If they happen to be better, then great, but. You know, keeping headcount flat. I didn't know if I wrote that on this slide, but that's what this budget presumed. We had. A dozen headcount positions in the FY twenty three budget. Most of those people were here all year long. We had a few vacancies here and there. And we're trying to get back to that same twelve for the next fiscal year. So the only thing happening in headcount, for example, would be merit and that cost of living increases, which are actually quite. Modest here at about five percent budget. Um, and uh, that's it, actually. I don't know whether it count increases really. Uh, supplies, there's a million moving parts. Some things are more, some things are less. There must be on more than a hundred accounts probably for various. Supplies and materials and on and on. So trying to say, well, which ones is it? I'll show you in a few minutes. We tried to narrow it down to which ones were meaningful to talk about. There's a lot of pluses and minuses, but it all kind of comes out. In the wash at just a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars of increases. In fact, on the next page.
Well, before you move on, I had a. Little footnote to put in our head. Um, we're talking about trying to hire people, and I think, you know, last workshop. Uh, mayor said that that we can't hire anybody at the at the labor rate of twenty one bucks an hour, we're offering whatever. Um, so I mean, if if we are decide we need to go add, you know, four or five bucks per hour for those two or three people. This number may go up a bit, so uh I didn't know if. If we're ready to make that decision to, you know. Allow the the salary for beginning people to be higher or not, but that would affect this a little bit.
Would we do that before we?
We could. Um, I think if that's the first option, so um there are estimates for what uh the new hires would. Cost in the the budgets actually built up by an hourly rate, uh the number of hours and all kind of details for payroll. So we have very specific information on payroll. Um, it's a very simple mechanical thing to flush that through, but to Ron's point, it would result in more spending. Uh, you know, four dollars an hour on three M T Vs at, uh some of which are already hired, so we kind of know where they're gonna come down. So, you know.
Yeah, I just threw that number out there, but you know. The mayor, trying to find somebody at twenty one was impossible, so.
And to that point, we've hired two people and brought them in at twenty three, and that seems to work. So that's still within the spread that we had talked about.
I think it's.
Yeah, it's closer, and they won't see an increase. These people, I I think that what we were seeing, Ron, was a lot of people that wanted thirty five dollars an hour. And that's where the challenge was. Um, I think our bigger challenge is we were trying to find labors. That were willing to um work for what we're paying, but I think we're good now, so. We've still got one more opening.
I've got four hands going here. Can I just keep this right a couple of extra times? So we can double check that. We'll just. Difference, we probably want to adjust it, but there may not be.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Just a little net to think about in the next two months as we finalize this.
Yeah.
Yep, I think that's great.
Good point, and we're taking an action item on that to just double check it, so we don't publish a budget that is obsolete the moment it gets published. Why change things?
Yeah.
We got a couple of months, right? Uh, so let's look at the the. Uh, let me stand this side for one second. So the the total increase proposed from what we think we're spending now. To what we're proposing for next year is a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, as you can see there. Let's look at what makes up the hundred and eighty seven. So this this slide is a quick reconciliation, basically, of the FY twenty three spending to the FY twenty four spend. You can see the two full year spending amounts there, and the and the increase is a net of a hundred and eighty seven thousand. This slide might not be intuitive, and I've looked at a million of these in my careers. They're always intuitive to me, so I hope I don't speak over sort of the complexity of it, but. All it's trying to say is some things are causing it to go down from last year. Because you're not doing them again, like the labor and pit run work for the Hart and View project. That was a big bucket of expense last year. We had contract labor of thirty six thousand dollars on that. That won't repeat again. So if you're comparing last year to next year, you have to take it out as you reconcile down. So there's a few things like that that end up meaning if you did nothing else, you stopped doing those, you would actually spend less money. So that's what those first three things are. Yep.
Just sometimes the terms. So I first looked at public safety demolition. So what, so I, it's the safety building uh tear down of the lean two part, was it? So.
Yeah.
If this is gonna be published, what's better than that? It'd be a better term for that.
Well, this isn't, no, this is not the ordinance. This is for.
I know, but but if people see this, when is the public safety demolition? So.
Yeah.
It took me a while to think about that.
What is that? The first response center? Yeah.
Yeah, I I'll call it whatever y'all want. Yeah, I don't think this this slide will get socialized beyond this.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, somebody else.
Legal settlement. Uh, everyone, I think here knows what that was, and that is not going to recur. And um and then on the other hand, there are some things going up. So the rest of the work on the lean two. Um, a new loader is proposed in the budget. That's the annual lease payment, I believe. Uh, parts and repairs across the board. And again, there's literally more than a hundred accounts. We're up twenty percent. So I just kind of grouped it. I will tell you, this is the most natural budgeting thing that ever happens. When you ask people who are responsible for maintaining. A hundred different pieces of equipment and facilities to budget their repairs, they're gonna look at everyone and say, I'll find you money on this one. I'll be playing on that one and so on. And of course, not everything happens like that. Of course, I have never seen a budget like this. Not go up in the first pass that you get from the people that have to do this for a living, because they don't want to get burned. They want to put everything in that could possibly happen. And so every year, this goes up a lot when you budget, and sure enough, you probably don't spend it all. It wasn't a big enough number here for me to get very worked up about one way or the other, but I just wanted to provide that context. It doesn't concern me that there's a twenty percent increase, because it's literally a tiny amount on a hundred different accounts. There was no one big thing here or I would have written it down.
Uh, the fire service contract is gonna be up a hundred thousand or spread out. How much difference is that?
So in this budget, so again, we're comparing twenty three actuals to twenty four actuals, then we have property taxes flat. In each year. So in fact, the fire expense in both FY twenty three estimate and FY twenty four is the same. If you were looking at FY twenty two to FY twenty three, there was a hundred thousand dollar increase. And if you were looking at the last year's budget and comparing it to next year's budget, there would be an increase because we didn't budget for the fire increase last year. But what we're doing here is saying, hey, how much did we really spend in the trailing twelve months of from June of twenty three? And it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, roughly a hundred sixty, whatever the number is. And I'm budgeting the exact same amount because we're only keeping property taxes flat. When we fix property taxes in the second iteration of this budget, when we raise it by thirty percent, we will also increase the fire, and then you'll see that.
Okay.
Uh, labor. So let me do the second one first, because it's more straightforward. Labor, five percent total raises, pretty straightforward. Uh, impact of filling current vacancies. I know this one sometimes can be a little bit of a brain twister. We had twelve people budgeted last year. We have twelve people budgeted this year, but we're not comparing budgets. We're comparing the actuals to the budget. And in the actuals, some of those chairs were empty for part of the year, the year that we're about to finish. And so we actually spent a little bit less on headcount than the full twelve people would have been, because they weren't here all year. We had some attrition. And so that's what that number is. Just assuming in this budget that the chairs are all filled on July first means that. The budget will actually spend seventy four thousand more than next last year. Coincidentally, that's about one F T E. So what that says is we had about one F T E worth of. Of empty chairs, like a chair between the three positions. One of them was only gone for a few months. One was gone for several. You had it up. It was somewhere around twelve months uh cumulative, but we had nobody here on their team. And we're assuming that guy comes. So that's what that subject was.
Does that labor into like admin and?
Good question. Every all twelve people, yeah. Yeah, I think there are three in admin full time and and the rest are on the cruise. Um. Master plan boss, pretty straightforward. We're gonna talk about that later. Uh, seventy thousand was the placeholder we put in. We've got a couple of bids that literally just came in, so you know, I I haven't trued this up to what those bids are, frankly. We'll wait for the council and the side worker gonna do, and then maybe we'll true it up if it's different by a bunch. If it's close, we'll try to.
Yeah, I was thinking uh. If if that contract gets let in April or May, they may charge us. Twenty thousand this year and fifty next year, so.
There is a clause in the contracts, exactly what you're getting at, about how they bill, and it's usually on a percentage completion basis for these, if I remember from reading them last night. So I I I think there may well be, depending on when the work starts and how quick they are, there could be some spending enough before June thirty. Uh, and if there is, we'll take that into account here.
Right, so that was a thought I had when I was reviewing those proposals is that uh. That seventy grand we got next year may not be in that quite that much, but.
Yeah, exactly. We'll take a look at that as we get, you know, literally get those contracts and you all decide what you want to do. Any questions on this? This is it. I mean, it's a very easy list. It was much easier this year than last year when costs were going. We're budgeting to go up a whole bunch, and there was twenty different items to try and figure out what was driving the increase. It's those five things. Yeah, five things under increases in operating costs plus the math, so six of them. Um, anybody have any questions about those six being in the budget?
The the only thing is, is you're comparing last year to next year. Seventy thousand was in last year's.
It was. I'm not comparing it to the budget. I'm comparing it to actuals. That's why I don't compare stuff to budget, actually. Because then you wouldn't show the master plan, because it was budgeted last year, and if you didn't do it. We get back, so it's just more factual and sort of see what really happened. Alright, cool. I'm gonna be past expenses unless there's any other questions. Let's add it all together and look at what I call P and L's. Um, this is the general fund. And these revenue numbers are exactly the same as what you saw before. Total revenue is just down a tiny little bit in that. Or to go back on it, that was because of the building permits being done a little bit. Everything else is being held flat at the moment, till we get better tax estimates. The general fund portion of that hundred eighty seven thousand, you could see it there, seventeen forty two, and expenses goes to eighteen thirty, so. With eighty thousand, about eighty eight thousand or thereabouts, my mouth and my head is any good. Um, is on the general side of the hundred eighty seven thousand. So that's just how the balloon got squeezed one way or the other. It's almost fifty fifty, if you think about it. Hundred eighty seven thousand in total spending increases. There's eighty eight showing here in general. That means when we get to the water slide in a minute, it's gonna be ninety nine. There's what happens to our operating income. And for the for the general side, this actually is the surplus, because there are no limits. So the the operating fund of the town has historically run at a soothing size surplus to the finance guy. Whether that's the right policy or not is a bigger question for other people at this table, but from my chair, sure, why not? This is great. We don't have. Anywhere near the capital funds we need to do what we'd like to do to the roads, so running surpluses and bringing money into the bank to someday help us contribute to the. The improvements to roads we'd all like to make. Seems like a darn good policy decision, but I'll leave it like that. It is going down. That's just math. I do frankly expect it to go down. I mean, usually, you know, we like to see more money come in and maybe we'll spend less. Or I think some of that's not gonna be present this year. In the past, we had big spending increases and then we didn't spend it. We don't have a big spending increase this year. I'll bet we spend less than that. There'll be some that we hope we don't spend maybe. But it's not gonna be materially lowering that unless we have massive attrition, which would be a bigger problem. So I do think the surplus will not be seven fifty, seven seventy nine, six eighty three. I think it will be less than FY twenty four. By the way, we're gonna circle back at the end, because we we set a goal to try and get our heads around what is a decent sized surplus, and should we set a target that we. Communicate to ourselves and the and the citizens saying, you know, we're we're building reserves for these reasons, and we run a surplus because of that. And we think this is about the right size. So we're gonna spend some time at the end of the discussion, brainstorming and thinking about the policy to set there with intention. So I can get this to move forward. Okay, the water fund. Again, slight decline in revenues. That is solely because we are not budgeting for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of late fees again. I actually hope we don't have that much collections trouble. Uh, we still have a hundred thousand of it in there, but that's basically what's causing why rather to tick down a tiny bit. Expenses are ticking up a little bit, getting those chairs filled mostly is what's driving this. Uh, ninety nine thousand dollar increase. Therefore, operating income is just about, it's down a hundred and twenty thousand roughly. Loan payments, on the other hand, go up. The increase here is because of the completion of the supply. Uh, sorry, distribution uh projects this summer for sure, right?
Yeah.
So we're planning for that to reach completion essentially in September, which will trigger the beginning of interest and principal payments on those loans over time. So the surplus for the water is a little bit more math. You have to take the loan payments out of the operating income to look at what's left over. There's some very interesting policy questions here that I'd frankly like to work on with the water board and the town council at some point. Because we are putting away a bunch of money to loan payments. Eventually, those loans go away. If you run a surplus even after the loan payments, well, when the loan payments go away, you have a pretty good size surplus. What's the right thing to do there? We also know that every thirty years or thirty months, we have to spend about thirty million dollars in future dollar values. So we need to build up some pretty substantial capital reserves over time as well. So big, big consequential math um that we need to pay attention to when we look at that surplus. It looks like a simple number. You can say, yeah, positive is probably good. Um, but I think the bigger question is, is it anywhere near the right number? Um, in terms of what it's gonna build up over the next few decades for the water system. Questions on this page?
Um, when you said like, the completion this year, you're talking about like next summer for this, is that what we?
Good question.
Um, the completion he's talking about is the twenty one project. Oh, okay. So so that one we have a loan in them. The Vista one is a grant, so.
Okay, no more loans after that.
No more loans. Well.
The Vista, we'll get to the capital in a minute.
We still have one more project, so we'll have to figure it out.
Oh, is there? Okay. Um, of the projects currently penciled and contemplated, as 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 the mayor said. Last major loan that we will finalize is, you know, we've contracted for it, but the amounts and all that will be finalized later this summer. And so we'll know the amount. It actually does pick up even from there, because that's just interest. So I think that number takes up to seven fifteen somewhere in that order of magnitude a year out. And that's it for loans that we agreed to uh as a town. And just to repeat something really important that Charlie said that frankly, I didn't fully grasp until very recently in the budget cycle. The the this, the project is funded totally differently. It's uh two different grants. Plus a town cash portion.
Right.
And of about a half million. And we'll see that if we get to the capital spending. So there's no loan on it. Um, it's healthier from a financial perspective, frankly, when we have the debt load that we have. And it's manageable to put that five hundred of cap of town cash, so.
But that kind of goes back to, we were talking about building up those reserves, because when these kind of opportunities come up where there's more federal dollars available. We have to be able to put up the cash, the a match, and so we don't, we haven't, we've used loans historically as a match. And so. Need to be done.
I can't wait to talk about that in more detail. We'll cheat up for the first time.
Okay.
In a in a detailed way here in about a half hour.
Okay.
Okay, this just adds those two prior slides together. Nothing new here, just the same numbers from the two prior slides added together, combined water and general operations only. And you can see how it goes. Um, we'll see what total revenue comes in when we get the landmark report. Total expenses, we feel pretty good about that number. Now, in the very close ballpark, uh operating income is just math. The loans, I think, will be darned close to six seventy. We feel pretty good about that. Pretty easy to predict loan payments. And the surplus is just math. Still seven hundred thousand, but not, you know, more than a million a year like we have. So we'll talk about that in a bit. I think the main takeaway I would put on this slide, actually, before I move past it from the F A B chair. Well, it's a pretty healthy budget. I mean, I don't, there's nothing jumping out here. If there was a, if there was something I was concerned about, I would tell you. I think this budget is prudent. Last year, you probably heard me more concerned about expenses. You're not hearing that this year because they're not. Uh, I like the number twelve to hold there and keep it staffed for another year and see where we're at with workload and if people are, you know. Getting it done without killing themselves. I mean, I think it's a very thoughtful budget at this point. Um, if revenues turn out to be higher, then great, we'll put that back in the surplus pool. But I wouldn't change a lot right now, other than waiting for the way of numbers. That's my takeaway anyways for you guys to chew on when you get to the decision process. Speaking of which, at the end of the day, all this stuff matters and gets tied together. When you get to what is our capital reserve position? How much cash do we have? What are the needs against that cash? Running surpluses in a vacuum, you'd just say, great surplus, but the surplus has to be contemplated in the context of what we need. And what we have on the balance sheet already for cash reserve. So this to me is the most important part of this after getting the detailed budget right, which I think Kristen and T have done.
Yeah, I had a comment on that. Uh, in fact, we discussed it last year with the mayor. The people that are that are. Living on bad roads. Are definitely not in favor of putting money in the bank versus working on their roads, so uh. We need, we we need to spend as much as we can on roads. Uh, without getting ourselves in troubles. Uh, it may be the the policy decision we need to make or whatever, so.
That's a great comment, and that actually sets up this page because I would make a distinction with regarding what you just said. The operating budget in town, which is what we just looked at, isn't gonna install new roads. Operating budget fixes potholes, puts in the meter pits, keeps things plowed, you know, it's maintaining the roads within the budget. Everything that's gonna fix roads in a way that the citizens expect is gonna be a capital project.
Right.
And so, you know, putting surpluses into the bank quote unquote is, I think, actually is aligned with that, and if we need to change our messaging to make people understand that. You know, we're running a surplus, because I'll tell you, including on the F A P, there are people who look at running a surplus as a bad thing. Why are you overtaxing us? If you don't need that money to fund operations, you should be reducing taxes. That is it. And I'm sure there's more than one person in its sound who thinks like that. So, you know, putting surplus, that's why I say surpluses is such an interesting question. More is good, but at this other hand, you'll have people who think that's ridiculous. So we do need to build reserves because we need to put it into a fund to do roads. I totally agree with Ron. That's what this slide actually starts me.
Right.
Starts us thinking about. So let me show you what I've done here.
Well, I had another comment. Last year. During the financial advisory board meetings. One or more of the finance people. Were asking, why can't we cut our property tax?
Yeah.
Requests. And uh. Especially when you go, but they're going up, so I mean.
That will come up later again.
You're you're, you and your committee have to agree that. The town is not in a position to do that yet.
Yeah, so a couple of things. So first of all, Taylor is uh well schooled on that now. And it's actually gonna be under, he invented the agenda earlier today to to make sure that we would cover that under item nine. So we are gonna come back and talk about that. It it would have made sense to do it here, but I think it's good, it's fine. So let's table that until we get there. Uh, it would be my suggestion. Um, so. Yeah, with regard to the last part of that, which is, you know, how do you sort of get a policy around that topic? I will tell you for what it's worth, I disagree with the members' position because I know what our unfunded road liability looks like. And I and I think that's a winning policy decision, and I think it's a winning. Position to broadcast to the town. There will be some who would say, ah, whatever, but maybe they live on a paved road. But for those of us that don't, you know, I think this idea of saving as much money as we can and frankly doing everything else we should be looking at. To fund roads uh longer term is very uh worthwhile. So. I I'll take, we'll talk about it with regard to how I manage the committee, and I think that's a fair point that you bring up. Uh, but I do think at the end of the day, it's obviously a policy decision for the town, one that I personally would would invest my. Time and energy in supporting the council's position if they chose to not refund public taxes. Let's look at this slide. I think this will get us to where we're trying to get to, which is, hey, how much money do we have? What are we gonna do with it? Um, I took that treasurer's report. And casted, because every time I get it, I have to do math. Just like I have to with the regular monthly packages to make it insightful. And so I took it and I changed it into this format. And I really would love feedback here because this was just the first attempt to put it into buckets that made sense to me anyways. And so this is the same data. This is literally from the February, I think it was. I was the only one I had at the time. It didn't change that much by the end of March, but this was from the February pressure where I re-bucketed it. And I bucketed it into three buckets. And there is a reason for that. The first bucket at the top is money that we can't touch. We can do something to get to it, but for the moment, we're contractually obligated to leave five hundred thousand dollars sitting in a C D or otherwise. At the behest of one of our loan agreements. Someday, I'm gonna come to the town council and say we should pay that off because the loan might be less than five hundred eventually, for example. But for the moment, the loan's about eight hundred thousand, if I remember so.
And that's our loan.
And it might even be more than that, I can't. So we'll look at it, but right now that money is not ours, not the town councils to do anything with. You'd have to get rid of the loan to to be able to get to that money. So that's the first degree of. We have it, but we can't use it. The second bucket is very similar. It's money that we have, but I would strongly advise the town council, and you guys have already decided not to touch it. That's basically your cushion in your checking account, so you don't pass a check. Based on our monthly spending and how it bounces around, somebody, I mean, did the math. Prior to my arrival and said, we need to keep about two twenty five in the general, one twenty in the water. I know you guys have all seen this because you recently made some decisions around it. I happen to think that's a great policy, so let's keep giving out. So there's another three hundred thousand of our money that we can't touch. In my mind, and I can argue for any one of these, if somebody has a question. The rest of everything else on that report is actionable by the town council. You might have to do some paperwork and move it from one fund to another. But all the rest of this money is free money. We don't have to keep it in the checking. We don't know what to a bank. Uh, we can use all of it. Some of it will be unintuitive to folks because we thought of some of these prior as stuff we can't touch. I believe in fact we can. Um, first one is the water system reserve. I think we'd all agree that's a big pool of money for fixing the water system when we need it. Uh, loan P M A reserve was probably the trickiest one for me to get my head around, by my, yes, sir.
Dave, you got two items listed on this, water system reserve and ARPA money.
Yes. Um, kind of similar.
You know, yeah, with the water system reserve. We pulled four hundred thousand out of that and it's been committed and the ARPA money has been committed.
Yeah, exactly. So this is looking at the total, not what's committed yet, and then we're gonna look at everything, and then we'll read the managers. Yep, that's right. That's a good question. So this is again, just everything that's, you can do paperwork and and uncommitted if you wanted to, for example. I wouldn't recommend it, but you can know. So this is all the cash on our balance sheet, so which is spoken for, but we'll get it. Um, ARPA money is, you know, you guys know probably better than I, that was money from the feds that we have allocated to the F Y twenty two project, as we know. Um, the loan payment reserve, this one was is very tricky, and frankly, this was a big good news that I've, but to me anyways, I think the mayor already got it, but I didn't. Um. We had been building up this loan reserve every month. And then we paid the loan out of it. It turns out, we're actually doing two things to fund the loan over the course of the year. We're taking two dollars of every base fee. Uh, no, sorry, twenty five dollars, I think, of every base fee right now, all of the uh twenty five on the. Inactive accounts of twenty five of the sixty seven or whatever it is on the other ones. Um, and we're saying, okay, I I did we statute that or what did we do? By some. Mechanism, we said that's the amount we need to set aside to fund the loan. And it turns out it's actually pretty darn close. It's very close.
Yeah, I think that's.
It's it's, you know, according to those guys did math, and it's really. So the amount that we said we should take out of water revenues to pay the loans is about the right amount right now. We do that every month, and we set it aside, but we also over time had built up. A very large balance in this loan payment reserve, and the reason is. We started putting money in there from water revenues before we had loan payments, and a very smart decision, really glad we did it as I sit here and look back on six years ago, but. Um, we had about four hundred ninety thousand that had built up there by February. That was in addition to the funding we're taking out every twelve months for the twenty five dollars from each account. So. Those are actually indicative, and you won't need both of them, and there's nothing contractual under any lending agreement that I'm aware of that requires you to keep that money. So it's really just a reserve that the town can use however we want it to. Might have to do some paperwork to free it up, but it's it's your money to do it, buddy. Road reserve, same thing. You guys know that one. Facilities reserves, capital equipment reserves, and so on. You know, you you've promised it to one type of spending or another, but you can also unpromise it or move it around as needed. These last two, I think you guys have dove into even frankly without me around, like recently realized you had way too much in the checking accounts. Wasn't getting invested. I'm so happy to see that that's actually happened, and it's now getting invested at over four and a half percent. Thank you. That's awesome. Uh, and we moved eight hundred thousand dollars out of there basically, or maybe not that much, I can't remember. But we could have moved to eight hundred, but I just don't remember what you did. Because I haven't seen it. Um. So that's the very interesting news to me. When I put this slide together, I didn't really fully grasp until I did. There's about four million dollars of money that could go towards building up reserves for water systems. Building up capital needs of other times and fixing roads. It's more than you have grabbed that first.
So eventually, once or twice a year, the council makes a decision to takes in this general access checking. And actually put it into. One of these other reserves.
Yeah, we would want to encumber it.
It's a good question. I I think there, Kathy will correct me if I have this wrong. We. We can move it. I would advocate that, and someone would need to show me the over the law that such you can't. We can put it into a savings account. With nothing more than a simple uh administrative task, frankly. Uh, whether we then encumber it and put it into a formal reserve. Uh, would require the action you just mentioned. I I don't know why I'd do that. I mean, I would keep my money free until I had to encumber it for something is the way I would approach this. I'd keep things generalized. It's a little advantage of encumbering it.
Especially in the in the road area. If we, if we can see. Road reserve being one point five, and then we start. Thinking about, okay, we can, we can, we can afford another project. Uh.
That's a great.
Have 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 that in our eyes, understand how much money we have.
You know what's interesting, Ron? That's exactly why I put this slide together. Because I think the way we do it by putting things into all these little buckets and saying it could be for this, it could be for that, it's encumbered, it's already, wait. I I just kept losing sight of exactly what you're saying, which is, wait a minute, we actually have more than we think we have if you. And and so I'm actually advocating that rather than actually move it into a subaccount called road reserve. I would advocate y'all start using this slide or something very similar to it, and the green line is the one that matters. And we'll get to Taylor's point about what you've already promised out, because you need to take that into account. But instead of saying, well, I have one point one in road reserve and that's it. I would encourage you to say, no, no, I have one point six nine six million in general fund. Cash that I could get to for roads if I needed to. And and that's your, that's your point, I think, is, hey, there's a little bit more here, and and how we account for it sometimes leads us to the. To an answer that may not be the full picture, and that's why I put this slide together, was to help us get there.
So there's another another reserve I've been thinking about. Uh. It's an emerg, I call it the emergency reserve. And and if we had. I don't know, five hundred thousand in the emergency reserve. That would allow us to be a little more. Not quite so conservative in our budgeting, whatever.
But it's there. And that, and you know, again, I'll try and make the same point again, because I actually think this is worth discussing, and I do think it's. A distinction. That in the end shouldn't matter, and I'd rather have more degrees of freedom than less. So that money's here, what, you know, call it what you want, the one point seven million and the two point four million in those two columns in green at the bottom. Uh huh. That's all the money we got. Now, we can, we can, if if it, I think what I would argue is it doesn't help us to say. We have to think specifically about how much of that can go to roads and how much is just a general emergency. I'm trying to encourage you all to think about it. That's the total, and it's all good. It could be used for roads, it could be an emergency rainy day fund, it could be whatever. And don't encumber it and stick it in little narrow places unless you have specific needs for it. So I would keep it general, keep my degrees of freedom open. And then and then you're both looking at it, why, everyone's looking at it, why not? Just to your point, wait, there's one point seven million dollars there. We should probably be doing something with that to satisfy citizens' demands around roads.
If you wanted to think about it, Ron, that three hundred ninety eight thousand is your emergency fund.
Yep, and I just added it to this chart, so it's now sitting there.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, it's it's always nice to be able to push push back against residents. Or or clamoring for roads, but we said, but we kind of have at least, you know, this much money.
Yeah.
In case we don't get the income this year or or something major happens, we need to have this emergency money, so.
That's a number.
We have a way that to.
So, hey, Ron, so this is all starting to hang together, and I actually think you're making all the right points here. So. The way I want you all to think about this. Let me spend about five sentences here, was first of all, let's get clarity on how much we really have. Forget what we stuck in one little closet or another. I think we should open all the closets and. And put it out in front of us, and that's what this slide does, and it's got bad implications. Um, I like to think they're all good because smart people do the right things with it. But this shows how much money we've got, and it'll be transparently available to the citizens, because I frankly think this should, this or something very similar should replace the treasurer's report.
I agree.
The other thing that I'm recommending that you do, and I think you guys agreed. Was we should then say, okay, that's great. We've got one point seven million, or we got two point four, but. It could rain. And I want you guys to think about taking a portion of that and not designating it, but just. You know, in Excel or PowerPoint in your minds, all right, we're not gonna go below a million dollars in the water fund. That's our cushion rainy day, emergency, whatever you want to call it. So look, we know we have two point four million in the water fund. But it would be imprudent to go, I'm making a number up, below a million. You guys are gonna decide what that will be. Same on the roadside. I think you could say, hey, guess what? We've got one point seven. We're gonna tell the town, hey, guess what? We've got one point seven. But we believe prudently, and the F A B agrees that we should keep. Five hundred thousand as a rainy day fund, so there's only one point two here that we could spend, and here's how we think we could spend it. So anyways, those two things hang together. How much do we have? How much is our safety reserves, which we're gonna talk about later in the slide deck? And then the rest falls out as what you could and should spend at some point, because you don't need it for rainy day. We just said that. And it's sitting in the bank. Let's look at the second piece of this, and when the third piece will be ultimately that reserve piece that we just talked about, how much do you keep as.
Instead of over there, so just move it to the right or to the left. Begin.
I'm just gonna do that. Um, so we just said on the prior page. And I repeated those numbers at the top of this one, one point seven million in the general, two point four in the wire, four point one in total. That's what we got. Here's the things, Taylor's point, some of this is already promised. We've made actions over the last whatever. And here they are. Some of them are proposed. Those uh, some of them have been, you know, ordinance at some point or another. Or whatever is resolution. Uh, they're proposing a town parking uh project to open up another entrance on. In this stuff, because it is. Uh, public works building completion, we're half pregnant on that project. I think we're all in favor of finishing that up. Tank liner, I don't think we have a lot of choice. Uh, we've been through that resurfacing, Alpine and Ridge Press there at their lifecycle point, I'm told, where they need to be re-chip sealed. That's what that is. Uh, and then this budget currently. Has, you know, I'm not gonna use the word placeholder because they've been thoughtfully put in here, but it has a couple of proposed projects that are ready for debate now and discussion. One is paving Brambleberry, and I think it's just Brambleberry down there. Uh, and the other one is a pool of five hundred thousand at the moment. For the bridge repair, which is just, I say, I would say that is a placeholder, because we don't know what the projects cost yet. So that's what's in there at the moment, just to show some math. Taylor's point earlier, five hundred thousand dollars is our come uh town matching share of the F Y twenty two project. We're gonna read into the twenty two project. That's the Vista project, which should kick off later this summer, finish up next year. It's grant money and five hundred thousand out of our cash account. So anyways, take out all those total spending, spendings. Over the next twelve months, and over the next twelve months, we're gonna add surpluses. Those are the same surplus numbers we saw earlier, just. We're gonna end, that would project where we end up with available cash at the end of next year. So we start with the top line, four point one million in total. Where if we spend the one point seven that you see listed here, we'll probably add seven hundred thousand back in surpluses. And we'll end the year with about three point one. And so I think there's a lot of policy questions in there, right? Are we spending enough? Are we spending all the right things? Should we be burning more of that three million? Um, I like these slides.
Easier to.
And and I guess all that's one thing, then I'm gonna stop talking. So the one thing I would add is to Ron's point. I should add on this slide, by the time we finalize how we're gonna look at this. We should subtract at the bottom that cushion about the emergency fund. We should subtract whatever it is, half million out of general and a million out of waters that I was proposing. Uh, and then show, you know, another net, which would be the math would be, you know, what you really do have as free cash that you can do something with.
And whenever we pull out of water, it still has to be used on water, correct? Like, I'm still looking at, right, and we're, okay.
So I realize this is pretty different. I mean, there's a lot of concepts in there, but I'd love to try this a couple of times in a row at the town council as we do monthly or year in. Instead of the other version and see if it crisps up our thinking about the town's reserves. Are we using them? And prudent doesn't say you save forever, right? Bruton says you spend some of it, so I'd like to start thinking about that.
I think, just to muddy the water for a second, I believe our ordinance says that we can't put money, water money in the savings. It has to be. It has to all go in.
It just says that excess has to go into.
So it is, so it needs to be changed. There's a lot of things.
Yeah, there'll be some cleanup so that we don't have fault on our paperwork, but I think.
That one.
But it would be silly to leave it in, because we can get more than a percent on it by savings.
Well, and I think it says it all has to be encumbered, but it's. That needs to be changed.
It won't hurt you to encumber it. I just think it shouldn't matter whether we put it in one bucket or another. We know how much we have in total is the whole point of this slide. Rue, anything from you on this? I know you're very experienced with budgeting and looking at this kind of stuff. Rue, anything from you on this? I know you're very experienced with budgeting and looking at this kind of stuff.
No, I like it, I think it's um a lot more. I don't know, just sort of simplistic. Um I also think it's a type of thing, I know Ron, you know. Made a comment earlier about, you know, responding to citizens, but. I think it's important for us to be able to explain and show. Why there needs to be a certain amount that's kept in reserves, but then also we have these additional monies and being able to prioritize the projects. Um you know, so that, I just don't think it's been plain to residents. Um why the town can or can't do certain things with the budget, so I think this, this sort of. Um way to show it would be very helpful for everyone, so I, I like it.
Thank you for the feedback, and I've already realized as I presented it now for the first time to another audience, maybe the second time coming to the F A B, but they're finance guys, they got it. Well, I, it needs to be even simpler, I'm a big fan of simple. Um and we need to take into account this rainy day fund thing and subtract that off so that we're only showing people, hey, yeah, we have four million, but we wanna keep one and a half, because we're smart, prudent people. Here's what we could really spend, and here's how we're spending it. Um we can lay that out even more cleanly, and if, you know, this could be a candidate for something that we regularly show to the town.
Yeah, this would be easier.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or even on a. Okay, cool, let's keep going. Uh oh, actually, I'm sorry, we should pause here for a second. Does anyone know of, or would anyone propose either adding any capital items to this list or taking anything off for the moment? This is just rap one of the, spend more time on this as we get clarity.
They did just have one question under Brambleberry, were you doing wild life too, or was it? I decided just Brambleberry, was that?
I think that we only said Brambleberry. I.
This project's only Brambleberry.
I would like to do more.
Brambleberry has.
But not some of the others, I think there's more roads in that lot that we could do. Chip seal not necessarily paving, which is substantially less money, really.
We think this could be done this year. I got to the end of it a little bit, but nothing on my end, so I started.
Yes.
We could, but. I don't know at this point, that's the same thing with water project for. One of our funds.
Yeah, the twenty twenty-two.
But you're really fun, but bidding then right now would be official.
There's trouble what's out.
I can tell you that this number, this three hundred ninety-seven thousand is something that really put together based on last year's asphalt numbers.
So, so the, the, the issue with ranches, we don't have a lot of. We have to deal with mostly Idaho or. It's more southern Wyoming or Utah. So they've already started their. Yeah, and so. Once we could, but we could, we could bid it now, that it starts in May next year. So that we get those good prices, you know, so. That's, that's kind of issue, if we did it now, they're going to jack prices up. And that'll be. It's late, and it's, you know, it's also written, the reason I asked was exactly, I expected something like that, but um. To Kathy's point, I think, you know, people will bring it up, you know, maybe that's not the right set of roads down there, maybe it's not enough. Um and it sounds like cost effectiveness wise, making it a bigger project, but taking it to the following year. I'm reading into what you just said, but I'm hearing that as it'll be more cost effective to do it a year out. First to go out to bed in December for the. And, and you're butting more into it, so. I hear, I hear what you're saying, we would be rushing it, we'd be paying premium prices if we did it next year, is what you're trying to sell us, okay.
Ryan, uh there was talk last year about greater county paving, greater canyon, you know, if that's still.
No, yeah, they were supposed to do it last year, and we didn't do it, so I don't know. I think the cha- the challenge with that five is we just can't. There's so many houses and so many people that those gravel roads just fall.
Yeah, waiting a year is gonna be problematic, so we make.
But if we can do more, I think that they would be a little more interesting.
And if it was.
To me, it makes sense to do one of those roads. Actually, I'd like to do all of them.
I think that's kind of what happened with us last year, is that we last minute said, here's a big chip cell project, send it out to bid quickly and. We kind of got everybody's, um yeah, if you want me to start next week and then pay more for the price.
Yeah, it was very expensive, oh, birch, or not birch, but. Yeah, that project was horribly expensive.
But unfortunately, like with Vista now, we're looking to delay it even another year, and like, if we drive down it, in its beginning of. You know, the spring, it's like, at some point, the excuse that we didn't get a bid in enough to find, I don't know if it's.
Well.
It's not going to be the road, it's just the water.
It's just the water, right? But isn't that going to take out part of the road? Take that, take out part of the road, so then you have to decide, this is a tough decision, because I've made it before. Do we take that road to gravel until the water project is over? And then we pave it. Because the cost of trying to, to put coal patch on that road. Is going to be pretty expensive, and that road also has similar problems to gravel, actually, it has one.
Yeah, so if they did the water project, we wouldn't, we could gravel until we decided to kind of.
I, I would have, I've had contractors just straight past the. At least the asphalt.
Yep.
And possibly until then, and throw on.
It's not, I mean, it's tipsy, but.
But it would be, it would be easier to maintain that as road based than it would to keep.
Especially after this year.
And that would be a bad decision, I mean, when we made that decision on this, people were furious, but there was no asphalt left.
You need to, to gravel.
To pay to gravel and you have the water project dissolve. I'm saying, I don't like.
I was shocked when I got home, there was not gravel.
But, yeah, that was awful.
Sorry, just a very quick yes or no, um. So I'm gonna make a general comment, I'm gonna ask you a question, so the, the, the obvious general comment is, we're suffering from lack of road strategy. This stuff should be planned multiple years in advance, so looks great, we can do it now, doesn't matter if it wasn't done before, we can do it now. So, you know, if we're doing Vista, the question I was gonna have for Ryan was. Just simply, you know, is there a synergistic cost savings of. You know, doing pivoting as part of a water project, or a month, or two days after a water project, or is completely different contractors, then okay. It would, it would be hard to follow through. It's, it's, I don't think you're gonna get any better prices, because your water contract. Probably not, okay. But, you know, that's obviously the way you know you really do that project, because Vista is a material by any definition, and it's gonna need to move ahead.
Mm-hmm.
Um and so doing it without a gap after the water project will be the way, you know, in an ideal world, planet. Um, okay, so yeah, I think, you know, coming out of the F A B in our minutes that you all secretly seem to know, you know, do reports. You know, we're just trying to begin, you know, what there needs to be. You know, we have time to do a long range water, capital funding effort, making sure we're putting away a good resource there, but we. You know, we're, we're against the clock on the right side, we're gonna start doing that. Um in the process of.
You anticipated my question.
Because we keep talking to you, and you keep still.
It should be. Mostly on some of the next month.
Okay.
And that'd be great, we're so ready.
Okay, that update to the, to the roads, doesn't, but just the rest of.
Yeah, it's just a. It's eagerly awaited, there are like two thousand people around here. All right, so um.
That's my two senses that we expanded.
So, you know, for the moment, leave Brambleberry up there so that we keep thinking about doing something. But I, my, my blush reaction would be, at some point, because we talked about really being more. Um outgoing about what's in the budget, what's not in the budget, and making the commitments to people. We have paid Brambleberry as a goal, for example, that we were gonna put on the wall, so I think between now and June, we need to answer that question. Of what we're gonna do with it, um and it's gotta be in this fiscal year. Uh which is in June, maybe next spring, but who knows? Uh but we should put dates on it, because that's gonna be global, it's gonna have dates and costs there. Um so it's gotta come out, if it's not gonna actually fit in, in there, right, this idea of leaving placeholders in a, in a sort of transparent budgeting process won't work. Because people will see it and then be upset that it didn't.
Last year, we had on the first reading these roads, and then. Didn't end up in the third readings.
Otherwise, we would end up having to really drive that price up quite a bit, if we wanted to do more down there, we would have to know what that price is gonna be, so.
You're doing some one year and some another, unless there's a giant cost synergy about volume, which is already shaking his head sideways. Uh that's a win, right? I mean, you. Even if you don't do a lot.
Yeah.
It's gonna be minimal. Say, if we're doing Brambleberry, that's a big enough project for that's. If we're going down there and doing.
Yeah.
That's, that's according to be have a higher cost per foot, because you're having mobilization costs that are essentially the same. As what Brambleberry would be.
So that's, for example, you can look at the cost of doing the maintenance layers on Alpine and Ridge Crest, finding somebody that's gonna come over and do. Just that kind of a small project, where if we can bundle it in with a larger project, it's gonna be better.
You know, if we do this right, and we keep. Find, even without grants, we have a few years of those size projects, we're gonna have forever, but we might have three of them, we might have a million dollars in the next twenty-four months. That's just off the top of my head. Um you know, that's three of those, and you know, what we should, what I would advise we should consider is having. You know, a half million dollar project that's real in this fiscal year, and tee up the next one, and tee up the next one, and be talking to people about, guys. We went through a paritalization process, and the obvious ones without even waiting for our roads board, whatever we do, this one and this one, and we're not gonna wait, we're gonna do it with the next two years. I think we should get to that kind of place. I'm liking where those.
Well, that's something you can explain to people too, where it's just. And I think it, it's not, I mean, we made decisions on some roads that weren't a hundred percent based on enough amount of traffic.
Yeah.
It was also just the maintenance of some of the things, so.
Those ones cause more trouble than they're worth. Like the ones uh west of the, of Monday's trip and so on, in terms of equity issues, yeah. All right, this, I think this, I'm, I'm gonna keep working on this to make it even more clear, but I think this is like a key slide that, you know, to me, if the town's mission is mostly roads and water, we should be looking at every. Every meeting. All right, deep breath, that's all the numbers for now. Um let's talk about those goals that y'all put so much time into coming up with and see how we did. Uh should have used gold stars, I see that now, so uh. Blue stars for the ones that are in the budget, Green Canyon, these are the same goals, by the way, I just cut and pasted it to Excel, so this ties exactly to the word document. Yeah, I might have changed the word here or there that I thought was not scripted. Um Green Canyon Tank Liner, it's in there, one hundred and seventy thousand. Water Project Twenty-One, finish up by roughly September of this year, check. Uh the money is in there to do it, and the interest costs on the loader in there. Start Water Project Twenty Twenty Two now, not Twenty Three, uh yeah, we feel like that's gonna happen in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
Yeah, um so by June of twenty-four. The bridge replacement, I'd say this should have probably been a question mark in this first draft, I mean, the money's in there, but there's not enough meat to know that it's really in this year's fiscal budget, so. I'd probably change that one to a question mark if I reiterated this. Pay Brambleberry based on what I just heard, I guess I'd probably put a question mark there and tell me firm that up as well, because we don't wanna commit to it as a goal until we're sure. Ryan knows the next one, a hundred percent. Send it along with discreet decisions.
It is Ryan's birthday, by the way.
Yeah, well, happy birthday. Improved newsletter membership, I love what you guys are doing here, I like the newsletter, the way it looks, the way you're soliciting inputs, so one citizen likes it for what it's worth. Um.
Thanks, Rue.
Yeah, thanks, so we'll, we'll firm up in the next two months, you know, exactly how we describe these um. K P I's for that one, but I think you guys are, my words anyways, I think you're on track for that. Tangle is visible, Kristen's been practicing her calligraphy for the charts, I think we're gonna be fine. Um. Noise, is that stuff gonna happen this year? Anything around noise or light for the rural lifestyle?
We have light, we have a light ordinance already.
Yeah, nothing changed.
I think the only thing is whether or not we do, we use what we have, or we change to dark skies.
No, the.
We have it pretty strict.
Whatever reason, there is resistance in this Canada the word dark sky. However, the, the uh ordinance exceeds dark sky requirements. The P and Z board is looking at adding a item to the application. That lists the types of lights that can be used outside.
I like it, so maybe this isn't an ordinance, I mean, I'm just, incidentally, my two neighbors light up the world like more than anywhere other. Um so there's no enforcement really, and maybe that shouldn't be, but. What do we wanna do for a golander? Is there something that you guys are comfortable putting in front of the town people that you're gonna do this year, or is it not something that's gonna stay on? Being ordinance could be enforcement, could be communication around this.
We had talked about enforcement, like how it, we were supposed to go.
Now, it is enforceable, and Jim, him. And he'll enforce it.
Yeah.
He has written tickets.
Yeah, usually, I mean, it's, it's usually more education, so he's gotten people to. Change their lights out, one of the things, and Taylor brought that up, is. We had this great ordinance, but it, we, it wasn't getting enforced on the new homes, so, because it was not part of the building permit process.
Well, that's a good thing to add.
So that needs.
What was happening is, it's in the ordinance, the builder would come in and build a home, and then it. When you get to the outdoor lighting time, it's whatever's the cheapest at wherever.
I'm just trying to keep us moving here, because I feel like I took it too much time, but so I, what I'm hearing here are maybe two things.
Yeah.
One would be this, we should claim credit for this P and Z change, I think that's a good one. Um and uh and put that here as a goal, and then do it. And the only one I'm wondering about is, and I don't know the forum, I'll have to think about that, but there's, there's gotta be a communication. Improvement we can make, because I don't think most people. I think, you know, you know how enforcement goes, right, like some people do stuff because you tell them it's the right thing to do, some people do it because it's a law, some people only do it if they get arrested four times, so. But I don't know where we are on that spectrum, I've actually never heard of any of this in my sixteen years on the ranch, until I sat in these rooms, no one ever talked about lights and noise and all that. So, maybe there's a communication goal we can set here.
As far as like nuisance and noise. Um ordinance, I think that was more we were gonna go over.
There is a noise ordinance for construction on.
Yeah, I think we had talked about like recreational.
Yeah, and we have talked about a noise, I would leave the, the noise one in there, because I know Rue and I have talked about that one a few times.
Let's add the light thing then, uh with the P and Z, it seems like a good idea, and you're gonna do it, so.
I think you guys already started it.
Just don't do it by June thirty. All right, let's keep going, uh one community event, big question mark, who is volunteering to lead that for the town council?
Well, it's interesting, we do a safety day every year.
Yeah, we talked about something different.
But I don't know what else, uh.
Well, I feel like we could make the safety day bigger.
Social, I mean.
More social.
Last year, the N R B did one well of a nice dark outside star.
Yeah, they do that one, and they do Arbor Day. Yeah, and they do foreign things, but I think that this was more of fun, something else.
You got to see the train going across.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we talked.
You know, the county has money for concerts if we want to.
But we'll retire work, I think I'm gonna know how much money is available, because I've got an idea now.
Arrange something.
So I think the question mark remains, sorry.
I heard a volunteer.
We have one, okay, perfect.
All right.
So what do you guys wanna leave on there for the goals as we write this up for now? Do you want more time to think about how you write it up, or?
Yeah, leave it right there, like that, leave a red circle, first mark.
Yeah, just to see like cash available and then.
Yeah.
You know, it's a noise abating stuff, we gotta show the falling, so, yeah, maybe. But I think it should be pretty easy, especially for first one.
Let's leave it.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, what's next? Uh this was taking credit for stuff that the either trail crew or. Is that all happening?
Yes, it is. Oh, it is, there's still ongoing thoughts and we're getting closer.
Both of those are really from that, the next two under recreation, those are great. Um financial stuff, I could probably speak to some of that. So we are gonna fix the reporting pack, you guys saw the first attempt at one of the pages, the treasury report on there, involved with that other format. I know what I need to do, I just frankly need a break after all this time with the budget, so I'll get to it in the June, and I'm trying to tell her, just talk about that in the F A B, I gotta. Sort of volunteer to help you with that, uh Kristen always volunteers, God bless her, she's gonna help with that. We'll get you some, it'll be ready, we are gonna do monthly budget, I'm gonna go back through the budget with Kristen, and we're gonna take all the things that we didn't bother to figure out the timing of them throughout the year. And put the timing in as best we can, so. We will do real budget, budget versus actual reporting every month, that should be insightful uh for all twelve months of the year, next year, I think frankly, that's a pretty good change. Um minimum reserve levels, we're gonna do that next. Master plan is on the docket still, master first training, I think you mentioned it was happening, right, Kevin?
Yes, um, scheduled in August.
So you guys are doing really good against this goal set. I think it looks solid. And speaking of goals, this is my last few slides, um. We have talked about this throughout the meeting, and this is the same exact slide you saw before, all I did was put a box on the side that says, okay. Um, this is where we're projecting to end the year. Those are the same numbers I showed you a few minutes ago. To Ron's point, and frankly, the FAB was very uh supportive of this, we would encourage the town council to think about setting a prudent. We can call it, I wouldn't wanna set an aggressive one or a sandbag one, but a good one. Um, and this is the first track, you can always change it based on how the world changes and finances change, but let's take a first stake in the ground and say. Our emergency portion of this is X, I threw a couple of numbers up there, frankly, I haven't put a lot of thought into it, so we're to get your guys' thoughts and it's your decision, so. Full stop, what do y'all think about that?
So question on the water, that would include the half million, right?
It, it's, uh, no, that's a good question, the half million is for general, is that what you mean? This is after spending the uh. It, it does not include the sinking, but the load requires us, that's. Money you can't touch, it does include the half billion. Uh, already deducted for the FY twenty two Vista project, so that half million is already taken out. As you go down the page, it's uh two thirds of the way down or so, and so that one point nine is even after spending that. Still left over.
Can I interject there? You get one point, but you've got an estimate of one point nine million. And. Reserve or surplus at the end of the year?
At the end of FY twenty four, yeah.
And that doesn't include the half million that's incurred by the loan.
Correct.
So if we paid the loan off, we get that half million back, you can put it in reserve. Which means we lose three hundred thousand. We stopped paying interest.
I think it's a little more than eight hundred thousand, I think it's closer to two or three million.
So yeah, it's a bunch of money, I think we talked about doing it, but I got to be, if we did some of that, maybe that's what I'm mixing in. Uh, right now, yeah.
When does a loan mature?
The four year loan.
Yeah, it's like twenty. Twenty forty something.
It's the big one when you're saying.
If it's two million dollars. You could still pay that off. Well ahead of twenty forty. And get that half million back that we could use.
So to your point, there's an economic analysis that says, okay, we're required to tie up five hundred thousand, by the way, don't forget, we do our interest on that. And we're paying interest on the loan, if the loan's interest rate is higher than what we're getting on our five hundred thousand. At some point, there's a mathematical equation that tells us exactly what you're suggesting, that might be smarter to pay it off. That's not now because of the dollars involved, uh, because we don't have two million, so we'd be basically down at a very soon. Um, but I did, I want to just. On that's just one line I've been talking about, the other is two and a half percent or zero percent interest rates, it's not gonna burn. I think we'll probably keep those for a reason, because we didn't do that long on our cash, but you're absolutely right, and we actually in the FAB said. We're gonna look at this periodically, we'll do it during the budget cycle every year at least, um. And just, is the math there yet, is the math there yet, at some point, if we had ten million dollars in reserves in ten years. We'd probably, in a pretty strong case, we're saying we should pay two million. If we're not getting, you know, higher interest rates on our savings than we are now. Um, so it's absolutely something we thought about, and just thinking it wasn't now, might be in the future, we'll keep checking.
I just have another question on that, on that sinking fund, you can uh. You can use that money when it gets to that point, you know, it's a loan, that's one thing. But you can also borrow against that money, you have to pay back in ten years, so, not that we would ever do it. But.
I think where your head maybe is, we could start to kinda think about that five hundred thousand as an emergency reserve. Um, in addition to whatever math we're thinking.
Yeah, I mean, we're fine, but I think you could, it's a little more availability then.
Yeah, I'd probably, but just to keep things simple, if for no other, you know, mathematical reason, I'd probably encourage you to think of it as committed elsewhere, especially with the low bill. Yeah, so I, I think there's enough here that you're over what would be probably a. What we hope will never be an issue, right, on the water side. When, when we do get to water planning, I think we're gonna say that the right thing to do is to build up reserves pretty much all the time, because the. The water work comes in huge chunks that. You know, should not be requiring a huge chunk in the next, next year, so we shouldn't be getting the one point nine up every year, it should just be going up. And, and so I think if you set a million dollars as the minimum emergency rainy day fund amount of that. It's academic, you're really never gonna have to dip under it unless something goes really sideways, and if something ever does go sideways. You're gonna be around this table saying. Can we afford to even leave a million there, we ever really needed this money? Before the system replacement in twenty, thirty, forty years, whatever it is. Um, you know, it'd be a harder conversation, you wouldn't care about this. Is actually the, the more consequential one.
So the half million, so, um, just from like. Going after our, our money and stuff, is that kind of a good amount probably if we had to put up funding for something else that we could?
So that's a darn good question.
That's probably a good number to start with, at least.
Yeah, because we had to put up a half million. Well, if you think about it, in this last project. We really put up more because the two hundred and, what was that, two hundred and eighty seven thousand of ARPA that we already had. Plus our four ninety nines, we put up.
We just applied for the two bridges, we were basically promising we had five hundred thousand of emergency money somewhere. Just for those two bridges.
Yeah, so that was a half a million we put up.
I think that's probably, that's, this is the best, I hadn't thought of this, this is a great point, and I think it suggests it should be at least a half million. Because if some grant opportunity came along and we didn't have the reserves, we would kick ourselves so.
Yeah, and, and it, it very well could, so I, I think a million is a good number.
Maybe on the water side too.
At least on the water side, definitely.
I'm sorry, on the road side too.
The road side. Side, I would say how, I know, I hate to tie up, because you know, people are gonna say you have all that money, why haven't you done my road, I mean, I hear it all the time.
You know, it's interesting, let me just interject one more thing, so. One of the things I keep, we all talked a million times probably way before I got here, but um. If we had a roads plan, and not just what you're submitting, but then taking that and turning it into how are we gonna fund it, how are we, when are we gonna promise people? Um, not the delivery side, which is what I think your plan is, is for the, this is our policy side. Um, we talked about that policy side getting you much, much more concrete over the next year or two, really putting it up. And getting, you know, maybe a grant later or somebody, or hiring for a good office. I think in various communication to the town said, look, guys. There's a, we, we weren't, it's not putting a million dollars in the emergency fund and saying leave it there because we don't wanna do roads, we're putting it there because. We think it will enable us to have greater flexibility and do more roads, because we'll have money to mat grants when they come, so it takes two sentences to explain it to someone. But we're doing it for the right reason, um, and I would be happy to take that message to the, to the citizens and help them understand that. We could spend it all right now, we could do Flylac and Brambleberry and all of that flat and have nothing, and a new year from now, our grant writers says, I did it, I got. Seventy percent uh funding, you guys put up thirty percent, we're like, that's too bad, because we don't have the thirty.
I guess I'm a little jaded, because I've never in eleven years seen any. Road. Unfortunately, and Ryan's shaking his head.
Hundreds of billions of road money that maybe did not for towns.
Highways, not rural towns, yeah. And you're right, there was tons. Uh, I don't know if the county gets it or not. Why not?
See, that's, that's my own lack of knowledge, and I didn't tell you, if there is really nothing to hold that money back for this, well, I mean, the slip was, though, they did just happen, and that was a half million. Uh, where we did have to have, if we didn't have a half million, we couldn't have written those grants.
I think that's the only time I've ever seen. Yeah, but it's, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't, you know, I just said, historically, I would say that we've not found any. For rural, and we are rural.
So because Y dot keeps the money for. Their roads. So have we tried to put pressure on our legislature to? Unass some of that money?
You know, I, I, I guess I'd say a couple of things, just in case it's a time, so. We're gonna come back to before the end of June, whether we actually publish this and how, and what's the communication, because it is a bit of a Pandora's box. A lot of different ways people can take that, it's only, that's such a smart move, and other people would say that's just annoying, where are you spending that money, so. I, I would suggest that we really put some more time in thought in this, for today, I think we've heard two potential uses of keeping a portion of our one. Point two million in roads. Uh, as an emergency fund, one is potentially the bluebird grant that might come along again someday. Having our match portion, but the other one is a traditional rainy day fund for when property tax revenue is small, or sales tax revenue is small, or whatever. Happens and we need money for the operating fund, so. I think it's clear there's gonna be at least one, if not both, in those reasons to keep an emergency reserve. And for the moment, this, I'll throw this as a straw man for you guys. You know, probably a half a million is an okay number to start, and by the time we get to June, maybe we'll have.
Well, and as I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, that direct distribution, I mean, the legislature gives it, takes it away. I've seen them do it before, so it's not something we should count on, and that's why I thought that, that would, if we at least. Designate that much money, what is it this year? So maybe. I would be okay, I mean, five is fine, we still have to have some to start, because it is something you fix.
I think it makes sense. And if we put that in right now, then we can almost always change it at a later point. So I'd go through the five hundred thousand in general and move it in water.
Ron and Rue?
Yeah, I, I definitely. It's, it's hard to put numbers on it, but you know. I was thinking, you know, five hundred thousand in, in the. General just as a ready to fund, and then I agree with that five hundred thousand as a. Seed money for grants, whatever, so it's almost a million dollars for general, I'm thinking.
Uh, before we obviously interject, I, I, that's actually where I am, but I think just for, what is it, April? Maybe let's just sort of think, we're not finalizing anything here, so put it around a half million, let's see how this falls out, you know, we may not be able to do Brambleberry. Brambleberry in this fiscal year, so we may have more than one point two sitting at the bottom of this page. Uh, we will get some information on the bridges and actually put those in, so. You know, it, it depends on how much is sitting there at the end of the year, so let's, let's go to the next iteration of the budget. Uh, I wanna hear from Rue, and then we can think about what, you know, finalizing it over later.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I agree with the. Overall idea of having um. Those initial targets, you know, five hundred thousand for general potentially, or maybe a little more and the water. Um, I'll apologize, I missed a little bit of that discussion on Brambleberry, I, I think that was Ryan was talking about. Um, does it make more sense to hold off to be able to do more roads at once, because there's some cost savings? I was outside on the back deck and someone decided to mow the lawn, so I had to move, so I did miss a little bit of that, sorry.
Be extraordinary to do it this year price wise.
Okay, yeah, I, um, yeah, I do agree with the general premise of setting some sort of target. And I think those that you have suggested there are a good place to start, at least.
And this is a draft, so let's.
Yeah, when it comes to roads, is it possible to keep track with the county and highway, or the state's doing, and I mean, if they got a project nearby. Can we be ready to? Tag on a project, uh. At the moment's notice, is that, is that not new, if we got spec ready or whatever?
I don't have an answer to that. I don't know.
It's, it's question for mostly for Ryan.
Definitely not allowed, it's not now. Yeah, it wasn't, yeah. If, I mean, it definitely had to be planned way in advance, is what I understand. So Y dot won't be, they tag on the Y dot if they can.
Smart.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we, I wrote down a note in my little list, I should say, Kristen, help me write down a note on my list of, you know, ideas that we should. But under the category, it doesn't hurt to ask, let's get connected and find out, well, you say there's no. Okay, cool, that's, that's only half of target setting.
So, so Amy in case, Amy is the civil engineer that works for Ken. Is our connection.
That's half of target setting. There's another part of it, um, and that is. Because that was the balance sheet side, how much cash do we have, how much of that, we never wanna go below from a prudency perspective. Um, the other part of it is, what's a good? Surplus percentage, how much of our a- annual revenue should we plan to save? In other words, it helps you set your expense targets, once you know your annual revenue, especially on the water side where we kinda know it. Uh, it's very easy to project, um, if you're saying I wanna keep. Ten percent of that to build reserves every year, or whatever the number is. You kinda know what you have to spend, and by the way, this is pretty much how every company I've ever worked for runs publicly traded private, whatever, once you reach a certain size, you. You set strategic targets for where you want operating income to be, or surplus to be, to be the word. And it's a guidepost, not a rule, it's a guidepost for, for your annual plan, some years you end up a little bit better, some years a little bit worse, but you. You go in starting thinking, all right, guys, this is kind of what we should be looking at. I just made up target submissions, because I actually don't really have a firm point of view on this.
Well, it kinda depends on why you're setting the. A target, I mean, if, if we set aside five hundred thousand as an emergency. Then that would allow us to uh spend a little more progressively and not quite have that, that big a target for uh. Savings every year, because again, you know. We're, we're a town of water and roads and. Our residents want roads real bad, so. Having a target. Just for general purposes is not gonna go over very well, I don't think.
Look, yeah, I wanna clarify one thing, so this is actually spending before the roads. So if you look at that general number, that operating income is before the road, so it's the amount of. Uh, it's setting the operating side of, of the town, I talked earlier about how the operating side is really the maintenance of the roads, and plowing and so on. It's not really improving the roads per se, um, and so. What we're trying to do here is actually directly responsive to your goal, which is getting more money for the roads. So the higher you set this percentage, for example, if you can execute to it, the better, because this is saying, hey, we're gonna run a tight operation ship. So that we do have thirty or forty percent of every revenue dollar to go spend on other projects. So you don't want this to be zero, because this is not after roads, this is before roads.
Right, so this would be for you setting. Money aside to put into the, into the road reserve, whatever, so.
Exactly, exactly, that's right. Yeah, so this is the operating surplus, um, and this is where we get the money to do the roads.
It's kind, it's kinda hard, you know, to. Because we, we know what our annual expenses are gonna be. I'm not sure. That we can cripple down much. In order to set a target for savings.
Yeah, but what?
What Dave is alluding to. Is we know what we expect their expenses to be, but they're rare, very rarely ever that amount. So how much? How much do you wanna reserve? Or in a. With cost overruns, if you will.
I, I mean, why? Why aren't we, what we, what we expect to spend, uh?
I'm really trying to get at, you know, the, the, the revenue line here is, let's say there's no grants for roads. That was probably a pretty good assumption setup for us. But if that's a good assumption, that's first column of revenue is all we get ever to spend on turning the crank and running the town every month. And roads, and what I'm trying to get at here is. What portion of the total revenue dollars you guys wanna target, you can free up every year for running roads. Uh, for improving roads, and right now, if you took, look at the numbers anyways, there's twenty four cents of every revenue dollars left to spend on road projects. And seventy six cents goes to turning the crank, I'm, I'm gonna make something up just to try to illustrate what I'm saying. If, for example, so. We need to do everything, but if there was some activity the town had, that you looked at it and push came to shove and said. Roads are more important, we don't need a safety officer. You know, you could take safety officer out of the budget, and you wouldn't spend seventy six cents of every revenue dollar returning the crank, running the town, you would. Spend something less, and the surplus left over to go to roads would go up from, say, twenty four percent in this case, to thirty or something. So it's really a guidepost to help the council think exactly about what you're after, which is how much. Are we, because I'll tell you what I look at, is when we, when we started this town. The seventy six cents of every revenue dollar was probably a lot smaller. You know, we've built a town infrastructure, we have a building we're sitting in, we have twelve people on staff. Uh, we have new functions, we have a P and Z department on top of an HOA that does that for a living, and we have a top of the county office that does that. And so, you know, every year we build ordinance, we build infrastructure, we build costs to turning the crank that don't get us roads. And so the main point of this slide is, look what's happened, guys, we used to get forty two cents of every revenue dollar that we could spend on roads back four years ago. Then it was thirty seven, then it was twenty eight, and now in this proposed budget, just running the town is chewing up seventy six cents of every revenue dollar we get, and that's all the revenue we get. For roads, there's no other magic for some money. If this doesn't change, we're never gonna have any of them. If this doesn't change, we're never gonna have any of them for roads. And so I do think this is actually a very important topic. Um and it's a harder, hard, hard one, because it's hard to listen around the town and go, yeah, we got all this fat. We had people, we have none of that, but yet we're only saving twenty four cents of every revenue dollar to spend on roads. Yeah, that's why I wanted to be more worried and try to explain. So that's what this slide is all about. Same thing on water. If running the crank, turning the crank on the water system is costing us, you know, all those dollars. We're only left over with a declining amount over there and lower chart down to nine percent of every water revenue dollar. Could be set aside for future reserves. Now, water is a little more complicated. I mentioned the loans, because the loans eventually go away and that money too would be freed up to work on. So I would actually suggest maybe shutting my own self up, but we don't really need to worry that much about water. Right now, there's a much bigger question there about. How do we think about the loan payments? But on the operations side, I was pretty shocked when I really started to think about this as, wow, we really don't have much revenue left to fix roads. And the citizens don't know that. Or don't care to know. They just want to know. They just know they want about thirty five million dollars for the paving dollar in the next, you know, ten years. And right now, we're down to twenty four cents of our revenue dollar. We're only getting two point. Two point, what is that? Two point four million in revenue start. This is to me is the crux of the town's biggest issue.
So the fifteen to twenty percent for general, did you pick that? Is that a normal amount that we should be?
Is that a good number?
Yeah, did you pick it because it's?
I didn't actually pick it. Those are just, I should have said that. So if you take five hundred sixty three thousand, which is what it says the surplus will be. And divided by the revenue of two, three, nine, two, you get twenty four percent. And so those are all actuals. Those are four years ago and we actually were saving forty two cents of every revenue dollar. We ran the town fifty eight cents. We had forty two left to put into the road reserve. And three years ago, it was sixty three cents uh running the town and thirty seven cents was left over for roads. And you can just see our spending has kind of gone up. Our revenues are. Um lining out and so the actual dollar amounts left for roads, which is one of those bargains, seven fifty going down to five sixty three. Those are the actual dollars left to put into the road fund. But the percentage is getting, you know, smaller. I don't care for the percentages, by the way. I think it did it to be as big as possible, I think, but not a lot of fat in the town. Y'all aren't gonna solve this one in a day.
If we go to send a number, we'd have to go back and look at our uh budget. It's okay. Where where can we cut? I mean, uh. It's kind of hard to pick out, you know. Place to cut out of the budget.
Yeah, the full details are in that spreadsheet and it really is, because I've linked it to that spreadsheet for the last month. And Kristen has as well, JT and. Willie and everybody else. Catherine's been through it.
Well, and do we know like the expenses when they're going up and everything in that percentage has? On, yeah, twenty four percent, like, do we know what we're spending? Yeah, because I mean, it makes you question like, so are we getting better for spending more money? Or are we not? And if that's the case, then.
I just, a couple of thoughts on this. Do you think there's any correlation between? This and the population growth that we're experiencing?
Us more to serve a bigger population.
I mean, it's grown a lot.
Yeah, so so you need to think about it in those regards. Now, revenue should go up, you know, at the same time, because of how long it is, of course, to a degree, not everything, obviously. Taxes as you build out, obviously should go up as a by the primary switch from forty grand for a lot to. Five hundred grand for a house. So, you know, some of that helps on both sides. We've added functions though. Right? I mean, we have a person helping P and Z now. That wasn't the case two years ago, I think, before we started electing part of Gina's.
Well, now, we just switched. We actually, we actually, yeah, we actually laid off a very expensive town administrator.
Yeah, I know that.
And then we we made those positions hourly. So, yes, we haven't really yet. And we've always had three people.
Okay.
A long, long time.
Yeah, so it's it's. It's, there's inflation things at work here. We all know that doing work in the in the town is. Not by five or ten or fifteen percent a year, but I'm sure any of the kind of project work that we need help with is going up, even on the non-capitalist side. Cost of coal patch and everything else. Every time I look at it, it's, you know, these are going up by leaps and bounds, not.
It's more than a hundred dollars a bag now. Yeah, so those things, absolutely. We've seen a huge increase.
Got more demands on on the town's resources. That is out clearly outstripping the incremental revenue we get from having those those extra lots. We have inflation outstripping revenue growth. Um but it does make the question, you know, to what's being sort of talked around? Do we need to? Could we, should we, as a team, not just Dave and Kristen, dig into the numbers and really? Is there something here we could do without? Is there a service level we can change? Or is twenty four cents to Kristen's question, is that a good portion of every revenue dollar? I'll tell you this right now, I I'm no town expert, but I'll be surprised if a bunch of towns have twenty four cents of their revenue dollar left over at the end of the month. I suspect town will spend. Not much of what they get and can't put much away for a rainy day.
Yeah.
So we, you know, I'll bet you these, I I haven't done the work. Maybe you guys could help us with way of it. Back when we were putting forty two cents of our revenue dollar into the rainy day fund, there's into the excess fund, there's no way other towns are doing.
No.
The funny thing is, Mam has on their website, everybody's budget, every town.
It's all transparent. So we can, I we should do some of that. I think we should benchmark it.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, we we in a vacuum. I I think people would have a hard time saying what services we should cut in the town. I think we can add more than we'd like to cut.
Cause when was our, cause our our census was in twenty twenty, so that's what our sales tax dollars are based on. But our population has increased since then. They they do some guestimates, the state does, but. I think it gets as much as.
But it's also a proportion, it's a proportion, and so.
Yeah.
Plus, we grew a ton of thousands of everybody else.
Yeah, we were seven highs today. As far as maintaining like a road. When we just had our gravel, the maintenance was a lot lower, I'm assuming, or was it about the same as this when we paved and then we? Um.
Was my first question.
I'm not sure. I mean, if you look at at, you look at Alpine Way, I mean, it was it was paved fifteen years ago, and this is the first time we've done it.
Interesting.
I will say, when we get to the, this is probably one of my very first comments to the town council when I first, you guys more than a year ago. I said, I actually have no idea. Um what's what costs more? I I know what it costs to pay it, because you can tell us. I know what it costs to do, you know what it costs to ship it. I have no idea what it costs over seven, fifteen years.
Yeah.
Maintenance, we need to know that. So part of this roads thing we want to do.
Maybe you would help with that too, I think, like doing some, just finding numbers.
Someone shared those, the video is gonna decide how much what.
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying, like determining what you know should be.
Yeah.
This is fascinating, and I'll tell you, the answer is in front of us, and maybe some people who've been doing this longer than we are know it. We can, we probably can't get there with our revenue. Now.
Paving everything is already.
Paving four miles, honestly.
The only way we can pave the town would would be to do a bond election and just do switches.
This chart really brought it home for me.
Fifty million, forty five million.
Worst state in twenty four cents of every revenue dollar. We only have two point four million revenue dollars. When we go benchmark that, that's gonna look really good. Saving twenty four percent of your revenue dollars, go, I know it's gonna benchmark well. We're gonna, we're gonna look pretty frugal. And, you know, at that rate. None of us will be alive when we save enough to pave the roads. So that isn't the answer. And reducing services is probably not the answer. So I'm just, this is just Dave's opinion, of course, but, you know, it points out the need for. For tons of communication, so we're not the only people who are really running into this wall and throwing up our hands a little bit, but. But it also points to the need for a working team to take responsibility, dig into this with the time it will take. It'll take the kind of time that I put into the finance part. It'll take a lot of time.
Yeah.
And and come up with the answers, and if the answers are, you'd have to do a bond measure, you'd have to take that forward, at least do all the communication. Okay, that's what's required. And we will will succeed or we'll fail, but we'll at least be doing the right work.
We know what the cost paid this down.
Several times.
Is it still a million a mile or is it somewhere? So it's on hillsides.
I think that they are concerned with maintaining that, like, so we spend all that money, it gets on, and then maintaining making what we have right now.
I wish we knew if it was cheaper or more expensive to maintain pavement than it is to maintain chip seal or dirt. I think we could guess, but we'll find that out as part of the committee.
Well, I think it would be much, once you pave it, then you get the chip steel every four, five years, don't you?
No, not on the asphalt, yeah.
Every three to four years?
Wow, not three to four years.
No, it's longer, longer time for three to five years.
All right, what's the answer? Do you need a bigger calculator? That's rated a chance or at least.
Yeah.
Making light of it, because it's a scary number.
It is, it is.
Anyways, this is all stuff for that committee. I mean, if you guys try to solve this at your level, you you would live here.
Also, you got pavement, then potholes are really. Bad, you know, they, you know, they sharpen their, cause tires to break whatnot, so. You might need more, more uh hot patches and stuff to perfection uh. Potholes and pavement, especially in our in our climate, you know, with all this water, rain and freezing and stuff. Maintaining pavement is very difficult, so.
Yeah, they were, they were filling puddles in front of me on the way to Hafen today. It's about, it's a little over a million bucks for for a month. Five miles, right? Thirty one, thirty one. There you go.
Thirty five road.
Thirty one.
Thirty one.
Three one million bucks. Very zero, yeah.
So bond measure. Probably wouldn't even get to there.
Depends enough to give them out.
But maybe pressure on the legislature could help you with that.
Yeah, I just don't know, because I know the the our highway money all comes from the feds and I don't know what their rules are. On that, but it would be worth asking them. Two thousand lots, you know? Did you figure it out?
Well, it's fifteen thousand dollars a lot. You do it over thirty years.
There's added to their property taxes.
It's five hundred bucks, yeah, that's long, just take that and then, you know, ties it over thirty, twenty.
The same people that are upset about their roads would be upset about the bond measure.
Yeah, honestly, I could do that.
You gotta get bills one way or another.
Yeah.
It's, it's probably a twenty year kind of thing. And then you gotta do interest and and everything else. I mean, your order of magnitude is a thousand dollars a lot. Most people's property taxes are now. Well, I guess mine probably just went to almost four thousand, so I'm typical. So I think most people's are five, four, that's twenty percent interest involved.
Yeah.
And twenty five years later, you guys pay.
Yeah.
Grounded in the near spot. Up of what? Sorry. Oh, to do the whole town, is it five, ten, fifteen?
Yeah.
The roughest estimate in the history of us. I would, I would say. Six years, yeah, something like that. So you accept people's. And that would all be in the bond measure, but this is the road to these work ultimately, just to figure all that out. Cause there's a lot of, I mean, let me back up, that would be even more. Cause that's just some base and and asphalt.
Yeah.
It's massive.
I mean, we paved it down. And we have to consider drainage.
Tons, tons.
And that's an additional cost over the paving. With additional maintenance costs.
It it's huge.
I don't want to make everybody crazy, but to get, but. Before we did that, we would have to talk about silver. Sorry.
That's the drainage issues.
Point where we can't use septic anymore, we have to go to the service system.
Oh, I know that.
It's not scary. Right, but it also would be.
It's not a cause effect.
No, it would also be something that would be added to their property sales.
But the amount of less stations that I can.
I was like sixty million.
I don't, I don't think we could get these properties to, you know, yeah, don't.
Yeah.
Do I sleep tonight? I mean, I didn't know that having a river sewer was a mathematically possible thing, such that lots. Is the general understanding, the high level understanding, it probably is.
You absolutely could. If you want to throw enough money out, that you absolutely could.
Well, I think the concern from the county commissioners is that we may be forced at some.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah. I mean, is there a? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we will eventually hit a point where we have no choice.
Maybe Salvo's Valley is not just.
Before build out, you think it would, but the thinking is that probably.
In in the, the old master plan. This is that there's one plat. But once it hits sixty percent build out, exceeds it, but we've exceeded it in that plat.
Okay, this is fun.
So just, yeah. I can't sleep at night.
We're welcoming more to that party. I'll, if I may, I'll make a suggestion. I'll probably move on. So this was the discussion I thought we would have without the super. I would not, I think, my, I would try and invite all, the takeaway from this should be the following. We save some of every revenue dollar historically. And today, we save twenty four cents of every revenue dollar now. We used to save more for us, but we're saving twenty four today. We will do the work at some point. I'll commit to doing that, to look at other towns and benchmark this. And I'm relatively confident it will benchmark favorably. Uh given that, I think anyone that looks at our town spending would be hard pressed to find service level cuts. Uh that the town citizens would support. Um I think our expense base is not going down. So our revenue base is not going materially up. Except as the rising tide of all taxes, so. So, you know, the math is gonna be somewhere in that order of magnitude, and the and the math is. Is clear, it's not gonna fund the roads. That was the main takeaway from this slide. So I wouldn't spend a lot of your time trying to figure out, should it be five percent or eight percent or ten percent? I frankly would probably plant on that this year and just set the minimum rainy day funds, because I do think that's a very prudent town councilly thing to do. This one is more to frame our thinking about, can we save our way to prosperity here on the roads? And I think the answer is we cannot. And frankly, at some point, we're gonna look at whether we can save our way to road maintenance. Because if we ever do step to improve the roads, to Kristen's point, I think three times now, it's gonna increase our maintenance costs most likely. So and so I look at this and say, okay, thank God, you know, not spending every penny of every revenue dollar, but I don't see a lot of free money here to play with. That's what I wanted you guys to hopefully wallow in for a minute and share my conclusion. Uh I would plant on this, I would do the. Fund the minimum amounts, so you can sleep at night. And I would to me, that's. Questions, comments, can they stop talking? I don't know, is there even another slide?
You got two more.
Yeah. All right, I'll I'll cover some of these. So um I think that became, right, that was your destiny on. Uh so, you know, there's a few things in here still moving around, and it will until June, but we have to put this to bed. We'll probably put some money in for a community event, uh based on what you guys decide. Um we need to add the road.
That could make us money, honestly, like either that or just costs us very little.
You're gonna finish this fiscal year, right? So I could probably take this off the list. Yeah, so I'll take that off the list. Wham revenue without an H will come through at some point. The band will have very little spirit this, uh or is it gonna be part of that? It's be awesome.
Yes.
You guys have probably all heard, right? Bridge funding grant round two. So that's not happening. Uh the bridge stuff, you guys are taking up here in a few minutes. So, yeah, there's some moving parts. I guess Brambleberry is gonna get added to the moving parts list. I think I have one more, and that's to then wrap up. So we definitely wallowed in the numbers. Thank you guys for taking the time to do that. I think it's a once a year worthwhile effort minimum. So I'm glad that you wallowed with me that. We talked a little bit about the capital projects budget, but frankly, it's still still coming together. It's just, it's, it needs some work. On roads and bridges. Um all the goals are in here except for the town. Event, which I saw volunteer for. And uh. I think at this point, do we need any action ban on the budget from the town council?
No, first reading is tonight.
Okay, so we're gonna read the draft y'all just saw, and it's gonna change a little bit for the next couple, and that's it, I'm done.
Thank you.
The only thing as part of that discussion, um and I will bring it up now since we're just talking about the budget stuff. Is that mayor had expressed some concerns um with. Some of how things were labeled in um the budget ordinance. And I have fixed those now. Um on me, hold on, I gotta do a little search in here. Just to kind of give you a heads up, and I will send the book out at the end of this meeting, so everybody has an updated copy of it.
So we can remove the final updated copy.
Yes.
Which is why I just kind of chuckle when everybody's like, can't you just get that out earlier?
Absolutely could.
Well, Dave, I think you did a great job. Well, Dave, I think you did a great job and trying to do crystal on that budget. It's a good, very good start.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Should go without saying that Kristen is the co-star.
Okay, so the only things that have really changed, um. And this is kind of something that came up last year, um, to keep consistency, it's general fund and water fund now.
Which had historically has been.
Yes.
We changed it last year for some weird reason.
Yeah, some bizarre reason. Um, nothing has really changed on the general operating side. The only things that have changed on the general capital side, um. As this is the actual title of the reserve, so it's roads rehabilitation reserve. And then there is no public works building reserve, there's a town facilities reserve. So the town facility, town complex and the public works building reserve have been combined into town. So there were two lines before, it's just not been combined. No numbers have changed from what you've seen before, it's just some wording.
And when you say, um, is, does that include this building?
Yes, okay, any town facility, so. Public works here, anything for the town.
Okay.
Um, same thing down below, just kept a consistent, um, capital equipment above. I think it just said equipment down here, so now it's capital equipment down here. And then on the water side, I did veto a little bit, because it is an ordinance, and it's called service availability, being on an unmetered account. So, um, I, that.
These two can be changed.
That was the, the funny enough, that was the only thing that I had to end up changing on this, um, so that was. And then, uh, on the capital side, um, it was split out, one of them said, it said slipwater improvement project, and then it said MRG water supply project. So that's consistent through there, and then I actually moved, um. Because you had the application of the system reserves for that project down below, but. It, it's actually part of the water project, and so it's been moved up, um, to actually be called out specifically here.
That's great.
Um, but again, just some consistency through there. And a consistency in naming them. And, um. I have to, I had to correct a little bit, it's not a tank liner, it's a tang lining. Cause we're not putting any whole piece in there, it's just lining the tank. Um, and then that was another question I have for Ryan. The, uh, the executed grant agreement calls it whip twenty-two, but the drawdown calls it whip twenty-three, so.
Should be fine, as long as we have that grant.
Name. Okay, so it's.
I mean, it's twenty. You can call it twenty-two.
Twenty-two technically.
That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, so, so it was for the budget purposes, I wanted it to be consistent with the, with the actual grant.
I think added to the tank lining must be the other.
Yes, and that's. They're not coming out of system reserve. Um, and this is showing that they are.
Now, we, did we decide we can fund the one seventy of?
Yes.
Okay.
Out of operations?
No, the system reserve, so the, the, the tank lining does come out of the system reserve, the other projects, the facilities projects and.
We need to move it out of capital though.
Yes.
So, my, so, sorry, just accounting.
I think for.
I would leave this as it is for now.
For first reading, this will be fine, and then we can.
We're gonna move that money, remember I talked about, I don't get caught up in which pocket it's coming out of, but ordinances do. So fixing it for the ordinance.
Yeah.
Um. And we'll make sure it's a hundred percent right next time. That hundred ninety-seven thousand is actually gonna be in operations most likely. With a contribution of the exact same amount coming over from the capital reserve. So it won't change any numbers, it just won't show how, change how it looks in the ordinance.
Yeah.
So we'll fix that in, in round two of the ordinance.
Yeah, so that's really the only changes, is just to let everybody know.
Um, is, is that the right number, one ninety-seven?
Yeah, because it includes two other minor projects, Ron, so it's one seventy plus twenty-seven thousand for some other stuff. Public works building, and then I think the share of the parking lot, frankly, um, and so those are actually gonna be.
Operating.
We'll list them out when we do the V two of this, uh, for the second reading and clean that up a little. That was Dave taking out funding, getting Kristin and Kathy realizing, oh, the ordinance, we gotta add it. So, uh.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we got kind of half pregnant on it as we sit here tonight, but we'll fix it for next.
Yeah, so that's basically just a kind of a heads up for everybody, just the. Some minor changes and word, never change, no numbers changes for now. Um, second reading will obviously see some changes, so.
Yeah.
But. I will cover that tonight, and it has been posted and it is live. This version, um, on the website as well, and you'll get this version of it in the book. Um, Ruca, another boo-boo of mine, and so.
That's why it's important to read it.
That's why, that's why I'm grateful that there are other eyes on there, because, and I'll still find something live tonight as well, so. Then I would always do, but.
And that's the whole ordinance then?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to just add one thing here, so looking ahead to tonight, this will be the first time I'll be there, um, and we go through that. Uh, I would probably be surprised, because you usually go out to the audience after each ordinance, that we, if we don't get questions about the bridge and the. Brambleberry, because it's in there right now. It does just say road projects, though, what people will probably ask us, what.
Yeah.
It is, so I just wanted to make sure I was clear how you, uh, you'll, you'll take those questions, of course, and if you want me to say anything, just let me know.
Okay, yeah, I will. So normally, the procedure on this is that Kristen will go through the ordinance, and then one of the councilmen will have to do the motion. And then I'll open it up for questions, so I'll re, refer to her if you, if you're okay.
You'll get them, and I, I won't answer anything other than numbers, because somebody will say Brambleberry, well, why is that, we'll say that.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and I told, I told Kristen, one thing she probably wanna make sure is what, because I'm sure the mills will come up. And so just people understand what the fire department, how much of that we give to the park, so she has those numbers.
Yeah, and I did actually write down.
So they took, they took the increase.
Of course, yeah, we knew from day one, they want, they were gonna take the three mills, all the other stuff didn't.
Lucky it increased because it funded what they needed. We didn't, we didn't put more money in the general coffers, not much anyways.
Yeah, so, uh, but.
It's just mathematically.
So at face value, when you look at this, it's like, oh, they're getting all this money, but in reality, we're really not, um, compared to what we even sell.
Yes, okay.
Cool, I think that should be good.
All right.
Okay. We good, Ryan? You get to talk about bridges now.
Can you roll them up to the, up to the table?
He's working on it.
His comments.
Yeah.
My junk is it as well.
Before I have that, I've got. Listing you permit for you to sign through the.
Oh.
So, I'm assuming all of you got. The, the report with the options. And then kind of the, you had questions, and then Kyle's responses. Um, so based off the hydrox of the, of the stream, we need to have at least a seventeen and a half foot clear span. A five foot.
Um, and so that.
Is that the stream we're gonna see in about three weeks?
What's that?
Is that the stream we're gonna see in about three weeks? Flood stage?
Yeah, that could be, yeah.
Um. That, that's for the. So you don't get.
Yeah.
But, um. And, and that ruled the, uh, recommendation.
I'm having trouble hearing Ryan, not sure why.
I'm trying to keep, get, just trying to use the close microphone to him, but it's not. Not very well, so. We'll switch back.
Thank you.
Um, so, so the reason I have that, uh, clear span structure is to allow the open channel flow. The, the natural channel flow through the bottom of that, um, right now, we're. Right now, we're going through one covert that is three sizes too small.
Yeah.
Um, and by doing so, we're increasing the velocity through that and causing gouging, and then stay on the downstream side. Plus causing, um, flooding, um. So we have a high flow event upstream. So we're, we're seriously. Causing some issues with that stream channel.
May I ask, are you saying downstream from apartment or?
From the.
Yeah.
Um. And, and so we came up with three options, um, that would reduce the. Reduce the velocity of the water coming through that, um, produce a, a, a natural channel flow, um, that's, that's sized adequately for the stream. Um. And then. It'll be, and, and to reduce the maintenance on that, right now, we have a, a covert with a smaller opening, there's trees, branches that can get caught in that. With more open concepts.
Kristen, do you have this?
Should reduce the maintenance cost on that. Essentially, all three work in the exact same, same function, um, there's just some, some minor costs associated differences with. With the three options.
Sixty thousand.
About sixty thousand range. I think the cheapest one is the still, still plate yard, still plate arch covert. The most expensive can maybe be the aluminum. Yeah, the aluminum box covert. Um. You know, there was a question on, we tried to do a cheaper option, and. There's really no rehabilitating the existing over, I guess. Question of maybe trying to line it, all that will do is. It'll reduce the flowable area of the existing colors, or even gonna constrain the flow more. Um, it's not gonna reduce any scour or the loss of potential. Um.
What's the estimated life of the three projects?
So the design life is, is fifty years, like, probably last seventy-five.
On all three of them, so there's no real difference.
Um. There's a, there's a concern or question about asphalt. Um, over the road, when, and as soon as that's placed, we have density compression over top of the asphalt could be placed over top. There's no waiting, so.
Um, I did have a question with the three to four weeks, like, I was kind of under the impression it wouldn't take that long.
Yeah. I, I, I think he's being conservative.
Conservative, okay.
It, it, it depends on what we do, we're, we're planning on doing this later in the fall when there's less, less flow. Catch a lot less trouble dealing with. With de-watering. So.
Okay.
So. Um, the, the reason why the arch plate covert and the aluminum box covert take a little bit longer is those have to be assembled on site. Um, whereas the box covert is just a precast box covert that comes in setting. Um. Well, other than that, that, those are those three options that are very, very commonly used throughout the United States.
Well, so all three got the same life, what, why wouldn't we go with the cheapest?
The reason why we had the three options was supposed to give you guys an aesthetic look. If, if you, there was actually one that I saw, it's kind of cool, but I didn't, didn't even wanna go down the road, it's kind of a theoretical. Um, it's a. And this has nothing to do with pros and, but there's, uh, so we have retaining walls on these, these structures. This one was a welded steel measuring wall, it's kind of cool looking. But I mean, I'll take a picture and show it. I don't know how feasible that is. Um.
Do the cost estimates include guardrails?
No.
Guard railing, um, yeah.
Does it include, because I thought it said wire rails if needed.
Yeah, if needed on the. On this, but we didn't put it in the process.
Okay.
So who decides if a guardrail is needed or not?
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to look at the, uh, the slopes, once, once you guys selected option. Uh, we're just gonna need to look at the slopes that, 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 uh. That structure will create, whether a guardrail is needed. Um, I believe. And, and we're gonna have to do a cost analysis, that there's, there's an option of, of going a little wider on these roads, on these over, for these. Structures, so that we don't have to go. Uh, so, so that we're not narrowed and have to have, have card.
For safety, should we? Girls at work.
I thought all of the estimates show guard railing.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, got it. So why would we not want to go with the, um, structures like parts?
I like it.
No.
Second option.
Um, it's four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars.
If you wanted to go take a look at one, you should go look at. You're ever wanting to meander around, go to Marbleton, there's one over there.
That's this one.
Yeah, and that's, he didn't have one off, off his. On his harder.
And that's.
Scroll down, you see that in, in place.
Four hundred and twenty-seven, though, well, that's pretty.
So a lot of concrete, well, this price doesn't. Decade of concrete, you know, well, but.
Okay.
They could have some kids go out and.
So have we thought about detours or how to get traffic around that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll need to look at and detour around to.
There's only one. Yep.
I mean, I think that public works is concerned about how either cars or.
And so.
Vehicles on middle branch, they would okay with carts and make it skinny.
Yes, we'll need to.
But I had it than that.
When this project does go, if, if this happens, we'll need to contact the fire department, your, your mess service here.
Right.
What's going on?
You guys want me to print you copies?
We can have. But if, if, if we're looking at just, don't care about aesthetics, I would go with the, the cheaper.
Yeah. You can't really see it.
I mean, I like the aesthetics of the steel plate. Still playing our sport, so, and it's not, not like any of them are ugly.
No. There's really. Since they all have the same life, useful life.
Well, and I think when we started down this road, I mean, we kind of. As a council, the time could pretty felt pretty strongly, if we're gonna do this, we probably should do it right, not put another over that's too small, that's going to. Um, cause more flooding.
Financial advisory board recommendation. I haven't seen the proposal yet, actually, for some, um, being able to view it, uh, sorry, I just want relevant pieces of information. The option that we are currently talking about, with concrete facing on the, the steel thing. Um, how much longer is it taking to do that one versus the drop in?
Uh, two.
Is the only value trade off, if you're telling us that longevity is equivalent for all functional purposes. Uh. Just probably, then what do we trade off, right, so looks, yeah. And, and disruption. And so we're talking about twice the disruption, two weeks versus four weeks, or?
It's just, uh.
Sixty thousand for four weeks.
Yeah, so two weeks versus four weeks.
Yeah, that's the. So doubling the disruption for, you know, I'm one of the disruptees, so, um.
You are, that's right.
And I'm the first person to stand on my driveway, so. You know, what is it, fifteen percent of the project cost, I'm talking four twenty versus four eighty? I mean, that's the only trade off, unless you're telling us there's no, I'm surprised there's no other trade offs, but.
So what, but the.
That one.
See, the concrete, that's, I mean, I thought the concrete was a much better way to go, but that was just.
And this is a full span concrete.
Yeah.
For sixty thousand dollars more, two less weeks.
I think that's.
And this is under our original thinking, right, these are all under the five bills.
They are.
Actually, may go up, given what it goes to bid. Right?
Actually, I think, I think prices are, are stabilizing.
Except for this fall.
Yeah.
These prices.
Um. Which was prior, it was prior to the steel was lower, um, I, we thought that aluminum was going to be. Cheaper than steel, but for some reason, steel has come. Down stabilized, but aluminum is still just.
So I was talking, I agree with you, the cheapest. So, it's now discussing, so. I mean. It's a lot of money, I don't think there's a big difference between four twenty and four eighty, candidly, in the scheme of things here. I think citizen disruption is important, but I also think citizen perception is important. And I'm struggling still to get, thinking about what this metal thing looks like, and I hear our engineer saying, no, the same, I believe you. Structurally, that looks substantial, so if the town council pays X amount of dollars to put that in, I don't think anyone's gonna say. You know, this was not a quality, uh, choice. I don't, I still can't exactly picture, because it looks like steel and looks kind of like, hmm, so it's, it looks like you're doing a farm, and then it looks like this amazing London Bridge, and I'm just struggling with which of the. This is essentially, that's still our plate, like, that doesn't inspire confidence, but the London Bridge does inspire.
I know.
I see, oh, I see, okay, so a big cement footing, um, on the.
So the question, is there different maintenance on?
Think anything?
Because what we have now is.
These are good choices.
A road, it rust, it's rusted, really.
Sugar, do your, your maintenance needed on these. You already asked you to clear them out.
Yeah.
Paving and puddles on top of either, you're equally comfortable, this, uh, indifferent. Paving and puddles on top of either, you're equally comfortable, this, uh, indifferent.
I, I know the public works department wants the cement one.
I think so too.
Spending that kind of money, that seems like, that looks quite professional.
You're talking about the difference, though, that's basically the cost of the master plan and is the difference there, so why would we spend sixty or seventy thousand dollars more? I don't get it.
Time of usage, basically.
I don't, what I'd recommend is just maybe bring it up to the, the system and see.
Yeah.
This, this is. Our, our.
Which is what we decided to do.
We've got tonight, got these two options that are fairly, or this one option, that's the still pay arts. It's gonna be about three to four weeks, conservative estimate. It's sixty thousand dollars cheaper than this concrete one, which is a two week process. What do you guys? Think?
Anything, that's what we talked about, I, I know that the citizens are pushing for a big public hearing. Where we can just schedule a night rather than during town council.
I think we could obviously.
I know.
Before that, you maybe just send out a survey.
How soon do we need to go to bids on this?
Um, we'll, won't wait till after your budgets.
Oh, so that's.
So be in.
So we'll do it.
Do we get a contractor and put it in? If we bid on July to. Put it in August?
Well, we'll, we'll probably do it in October, October.
The least amount of water will be in.
And that was the thinking originally too.
Yeah.
Wait, cause then water was down.
Yes.
People.
Okay. Your options.
So I got a request to Ryan.
Yeah.
If we're gonna not do anything with the middle branch bridge, do we need to do some remediation or rip out or anything, or leave it like that for, I mean, eventually it has to be done to that bridge.
Eventually, if you wanna continue with that road, I'd do the exact same thing. It's the same exact stream, there's no additional tributaries to it, that one's going to need to have, uh, realignment. To, to readjust that spring in, that, the alignment that spring entering. The bridge.
Could that affect, um, the Hardman Bridge image, like, cause it's, it's. Kind of fun, you don't have to worry about it getting washed down and giving our, our new bridge.
No, I wouldn't worry about.
I wasn't sure if that was something.
It, and it's, it's that, one of those culverts ever comes out, it's gonna get stopped very quick.
Okay. Yeah, that does, that spring does go like that.
If we do get a flood, that's that issue. Without any of your problems.
Yeah.
That's one of the funny things, so. If we're looking, uh, this is, this is off topic, but. Talking about the tanks that's on the top of the hill, going with one in Farbeal. And they're worried about the, the tank roof hatch. And it's not twenty four or thirty six inches above the top of the roof. Cause what if it floods? If it floods and the whole valley is dead, so what'll be there about?
Especially up there, yeah. Is that the EQ?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we dealt with them on the, as you know.
Yeah.
On the water tanks.
Uh, these are essentially the same, that, oh, there may be a little additional cost in, in reshaping the channel.
And, and whatever we have to move or. On middle branch.
Well.
Well, no.
No, we'll just.
We have to. The hydrant. We'll just take a hydrant out.
You can just, you could have that in power if you're water operating, but.
Are you guys talking about mess rates now?
So that whole road's. Needs to move, it's not just a bridge, it's, uh, everything had to force a shop.
I think when we were talking about doing a public hearing, it was more people were like. Middle branch, so. I think that doing a public hearing is now. It's just gonna be focused on Hardman, is that where we're going as a council?
Yeah, do both of them at some point.
Yeah, I think, I think we do both of them. At this point, I mean, you kind of know what the other option is, it's not the same as this, a little more money.
I, I think you have to do.
This, this is only one option for middle branch, because the other. Two, three options. Were, uh, hard path, walking path and nothing.
We don't even know what that would cost.
We're not ready for that thing.
Huh?
Or car path.
Car path.
But I guess like time wise, if we're doing a public hearing, it really is to focus on apartments and people, is, is for us to budget for. Um, middle branch is still. Definitely, mold another, so we don't have to necessarily be worried about that in the next fiscal year. Or is that something we are worrying about?
No.
Okay, good, cause I wasn't worried, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. I guess the, yeah, I guess the question, if we do a, a public hearing on this to decide which option, I can guarantee middle branch will come up.
The only thing will be there, that's not.
See, that's the only reason.
You can't be silent on it, but I think the answer I'm hearing is, is we've decided to go forward with. Uh, Hardman.
Yeah.
Good reason, and no one's gonna disagree with that, um, and. We've decided to do nothing, I think is what you're saying, on middle branch in the next fiscal year, and we will thoughtfully visit the topic in the future. It's not gonna be the answer everyone wants to hear, it's not that answer.
Okay.
Puts it back on my end and.
There's gonna be townspeople that are gonna be surprised still that it's Hardman and not middle branch, cause I think only residents were only. Ever really aware of middle branch because of the closure, I think it's gonna be a surprise.
Sure, though.
Isn't that like something where we can talk about the importance of having. A bridge that is already, we're able to sustain, I feel like Hardman a lot better than middle branch, like as far as useful this even, Hardman is definitely, yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, if, if you're looking. Your, your, his film and you're looking at. Cost per. Your, your, your cost benefit analysis. Hardman's. It's ten times more used.
In the winter.
Yeah, I can't remember what the council runs, it was over two hundred.
Do we have a cost benefit analysis between the two bridges?
No, it was just a.
If one was to be done, Hardman wouldn't win hands down.
Yeah.
I think the position you're taking is Hardman is not an optional exercise, we, we need to do it, we have it ready, we moved with haste. Um, and we're bringing it to the town. And I know you'd like to hear about middle branch, but we, you have an option, the harder that we need to pursue, we're letting it. But the, but the problem is, you're just gonna have to say, well, we, we don't know what we're doing, that'll just be.
It will, that's the thing.
It'd be better if we knew what we were doing.
Well, maybe it can just be more informative about Hardman, the public hearing, so. Just leave it like that, title it that.
Well, somehow, I, I keep looking at the road, the road plan. It's gonna list all the road issues, which includes middle branch and whatnot, and. I'm not sure if it's, it's gonna be able to, to, uh, compare the. The need, what's the priority need to redo middle branch versus pave. Lot twenty two or, or whatever, somehow, we gotta put our money in the most effective places, and it's, it's the safety of middle branch. Is higher than paving lot twenty two, then people have to understand that, but somehow, that road plan is gonna have to be, uh. The panacea to all of our. Priority decisions somehow.
Bane everybody.
I know, yeah, but our original road plan does say that we needed to replace those bridges.
Right.
I mean, we've known this, we've known this for a long time.
Yeah, but how, how do we, how do we tell people in plot twenty two that that bridge is more important than their road, so?
Well, it services a lot more people. Yeah, middle branch, yeah. That's a tough, middle branch is a tough one. I don't think, and I think you're right, Hardman is really not, it's just a matter of what, which one we select. But I think two weeks versus four weeks is a big contributor. So.
Yeah, it depends on. We do it in November, half the people are going, it's.
Exactly.
It's, it's who, who's gonna, who, hey, you gotta. In your, your meeting, if you got somebody. Complaining about the two, two weeks to forwards. Maybe consider, are, are they snowbirds, are they even like to be dealing with it?
And maybe I make that a priority, time wise, as much as sixty grand, what it could do, kind of like Bruce said, it's going towards our.
Yeah.
Vision emissions, they're getting all that. What these people.
I, I don't have a preference.
No, I hear what you're saying.
No realization that long.
Yeah, I know you don't have a preference.
Okay.
Are, are you thinking that you would present a couple of options just for town input feedback? So no suggested solution from the town council, we'll give it answers, here's a couple of options where you see, y'all, tell us what you think, and we'll take it under consultation.
I think one of the things we just mentioned is that we're having, having a hard time deciding, so we wanted to put it out to the public, say, these are the three options as it's a cost. And these are the drawback, the, you know, the challenges between them.
But, yeah, I say, so there's no, no functional difference, you know, that's just, this one's gonna take. Four weeks, and it's gonna be sixty grand less than this one, this can take two weeks.
Yeah, and that might be a big deal.
What's, what's.
Yeah, so there has been a big push from the public and the council that have public needs, so I don't mind calling you to, it's just. If it makes sense.
It would be important to state the case for why this is an optional bridge.
No, it's not enough. We didn't, we. Same with bandage, go back together so many times. But we need to.
Essentially, it stops becoming. This is, right now, we have the opportunity to do something about it.
Mm-hmm.
If we get hit with a big flood, then we have no choice. So right now, we have a choice.
Yeah, we're hoping.
We need to do something before it becomes not a choice. So, okay. Look at the May schedule.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
So, Olivia, oh, I know it's your birthday, and you're supposed to have. Reverb. All right, uh, let's see. So the next thing on the agenda is the master plan, our piece. And I think everyone got those.
Let me jump in with this one here. I took the liberty of sending the master, the proposals for the master plan. Dave to get his comments back. For Ohio, I got a full page of comments. One, just highlight some of the key points of it, and then we start talking about the master plans. You, Ruth, can you and Ron hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Okay, first, from Dave. Why are we doing this master plan? What specifically do we want to get from it, and what actual value is there in doing a master plan or a comprehensive plan? And then, given that our town is not typical, and what we do, little if any, land planning and zoning work. Let alone long range land planning would be in the plan, and that's in both of the proposals. And then with the HOA land resides, the HOA land requires planning and zoning. In the typical long range plan, doesn't make, make sense. Um, typically, best of planning typically around planning for commercial land. Parks is common space, we don't have that much of either one. Bottom line, if we don't have to do a master plan, a comprehensive plan, suggest we not do one. We have the two proposals. I'm gonna throw. Two different options out here, well, actually, three different options. We can select one of the master plans. And go with the proposal. Since the options on it, we're both bringing, we're bringing both in at the budgeted amount. Option number two. Would be to decide which of the two master plans. Based upon the. Skill set of the consultants, we would be interested in using. And then tell me to go back and contact those people and talk with them. And see what needs to, what we can pull out of it. To get it down to what the town actually needs, because there's some things they're talking about doing in both. That just aren't relevant to the town of Star Valley. The third one. Is more of a radical one. We have done the mass, the vision and mission statement. We have an older master plan. We're doing an update on the roads plan as we talk. Nothing in terms of the. Structural area of the town would end up changing. One thing that would end up changing from the master plan. Is how do we take the mission and vision statement? And move that into actionable activities for the town council to look at. It turns out that we have somebody that lives in the town that has done that for ten years. So we could do that and use that to update the existing master plan, come up with a new plan. At little or no cost.
Like have it, like, somebody here would write it, could?
Not necessarily us, but somebody that has done it before, that would bring it back to the town council.
It lives here, you were saying, okay.
I'm open to suggestions and.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've received four now total, four, and we really haven't been happy with any of them.
I honestly, from what the end result was from all the surveys and what Nancy pulls together and wrote up. I kind of felt like that was a great. Thing for somebody to just go off of and not need everything that we've seen from all these proposals, I think it's way overkill for what we need. That was just my. After I saw what she had done with it, and we went over and after hearing everybody that was associated with it, it felt like. A lot of what the town was going towards with the survey and everything was in what she had written up there, and so. If there is somebody who is just as qualified to run with it and knows our town, I think that would be huge for us. We'd probably save us a lot of money.
But would it be in a, I, the only reason I ask is, cause some of the grants that we've received, like the front entrance grant and a few others, we, we had to have a current master plan.
Oh.
So that would.
It would be updating.
Updating, but we already have, okay.
Just how it's gonna come in, because the physical. Underpaying payment of the roads and the structure of the roads is gonna change. We're not gonna put in any more roads in, doesn't look like we're going to be annexing anything in the next ten years. We have four lots that are going to be commercial if they sell. Uh, we have one piece of property over there for recreation, and then we've got another recreation plan over by the dog park.
But that envelops what we've already done, so it's like, yeah.
They just need to move into the. The master plan.
And so it would be, you would call it updating master plan, my only thing is, the old master plan was really outdated, so. All right, how much of that do we have to use?
Well, I, I guess that would be. Oh, okay, so, yeah.
We're not gonna know anything about the. The substructure of the land in.
Yeah.
And, and then, under the roads, other than what Ryan's gonna do.
I think the scary thing about even the old master plan is that, they're that whole section on recreation, or are we gonna build ball parks and rec center, and I, and people would see that, it's like, what are you gonna do ball parks? Oh my god, we can't pave the roads. So, um, I, I would probably be okay with it than, than bringing in a company who. Who's gonna give me parks, not the ball parks are bad.
It sounds to me like after four proposals that have all kind of run the same gamut of.
Yeah.
Not actually providing what the town council's been asking for. Um, if we have somebody that's local that can provide what the coun, council's looking for, then. That seems to be the best option.
And if we don't. Like it, we're back where we were anyway, right, so it's not.
Yeah, that's kind of how I. Yeah, but that would do, cause we do need to update it.
I have a question, um, so I actually, after I sent those comments I had about the two proposals this afternoon. I started thinking kind of along the same lines, but we have an existing master plan, could we not just update it based on, you know, the survey results and. You know, things like that, cause it, it does seem like a lot of money. And then, that we might not get what we really need to pay an outside company to do. Um, but anyway, on the person that we're talking about that. Could potentially do this, are they talking, are they doing it on a volunteer basis, are they gonna accept, expect compensation?
You have two people in the town that have experience in that area. Nancy Ellis has volunteered. And she has done it for towns throughout Florida. And you do have her brother. Who is a consultant all over the world doing the recreation and resort development stuff. Both are residents of the town.
Well, goodness.
You want to throw a third one in, you have.
I have you.
Town resident that has three degrees of recreation.
Uh, I, I like this homeless one, uh, better. If we, but what bothers me was their, their low estimate, which would keep in under our budget. I have no clue what their result would be. I mean, I agree with you guys that we've got the road work all done. Um.
Yeah, uh, Ron, I can, I can say that on this Somus, when we're looking at the transportation network, they're talking about trains, buses, and that type of thing, we're not gonna do that.
Right, well, so I'd say, if we can, you know.
Company?
It's.
Yeah, they got the cable to go out, do some need, need analysis.
Yeah.
We're out of Utah.
They can identify the needs.
Yeah.
They have a Salt Lake Hall, it's okay.
I think I'll, I'll quit, go home. You're not listening.
Hold, hold on. Did you hear that?
No.
Victor worked, Victor worked for this company.
Ron, I worked for them for thirty-three years, and I know they do this type of work, but I'll tell you right now, they're expensive.
I know, Somus is.
Somus.
Yeah, so that, that, that their, their cost was hundred and fifty top and low end of seventy-five, so like I said, I'm not sure what we'd get at seventy-five. Might not get anything, so.
Reimbalance the wheel after all.
I know, it's down, I, they do that, but they're, they're top dollars.
Yeah.
That's why I worked there.
Okay, the other one, the other one is.
I just don't think we're gonna get what we want.
Yeah, and I have four proposals, that's exactly, it seems to be the trend, that they're trying to offer everything that you're not asking for, so.
Uh, I rewrote it and tried to eliminate a lot of this stuff.
They're, they're not a small town type thing, they're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're a metropolitan Salt Lake.
They're like Jackson.
Yeah.
Okay. I would be very.
I'm good with that decision.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna have.
We can keep it locals.
Whatever you guys decide, I, I will abstain.
Well, we don't have to vote on it, because we're not to.
Yeah, I just like to make sure that whatever we can identify recreational facilities that people want, identify how to get them, cut y'all. We need to come up with how to get money to, to put in facilities, whatever for the people want, so I hope Nancy or he can do that.
Um, great writing, there's only two sources, two sources where grants are coming from.
Well, they gotta go out and do the work.
Next, the other is the federal register.
Whoever, whoever's writing this plan has to go out and do that work, identify those. Come up with plans.
And you're adding stuff to it.
It's just a plan.
Well, that's what we need, we need a plan. What are we gonna do? What's it gonna cost? How do we get the money? Et cetera, and that's what needs to be done, uh.
That's not gonna be in a master plan.
That's, that's what a plan is.
Yeah, well, it's not a master plan.
Not a master plan.
Figure out those steps and get.
That'll be part two of the project, will be to help you figure out how to get the money.
Yeah. That requires doing the piece billion analysis to come up with how to do that, so. But you can, you can, you can have Nancy and your brother do whatever they want, I don't care. Uh.
Oh, I, I'm staying out of it, I'm just throwing up.
What do you think?
Three different options.
Rue, what do you think about this?
And by the way, I have not even talked to Nancy's brother.
I thought you were gonna say Nancy, I was like, oh, 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 oh.
No, Nancy, the one, what?
I think we have, I mean, you know, Taylor's wife and, uh, relative or Nancy's brother um, are more than likely qualified to do it. There may be other people in the town that are qualified to do it. I guess maybe I would have a little concern about how, is there a concern about a councilman's
Yeah.
family doing it.
I'm abstaining.
Um, so, but I also, I, I really didn't like either of those proposals that came in, I think we'd have a lot of back and forth to try and get it where we want it. Um. So, yeah, I'm kind of, I feel like we're stuck again on the master plan, update. But I think we have qualified people that are, could do it, and that we could get it done in-house, but it might take a little bit of a put a committee together, or, you know, see if there are other qualified people in town, and would those people be willing to do it without compensation? In which case, I think it might really be something we should consider, like on a volunteer basis, versus, you know, seventy thousand dollars of the town's money. Um, so I don't know, it's.
Yeah, I think, I, I can tell you being involved in the last one that we did end up having some of our citizens and the town council rewrote a lot of it.
Lot of it, then I would say we probably are better off just trying to give it a go in-house. And if that doesn't work, we always have the option to try and go out on contract at later in the year or to next year, I don't know.
Like, my dad always likes to say, think it's free.
Yeah, and in.
Don't spend any money yet.
Ron, in terms of your recreation aspects for the, the town and the area. Uh, if you remember right, about three years ago or four years ago, there was a study done by the homeowners association to identify the recreational uh, needs or aspects.
It was more of a survey, not a study.
Pardon?
It was more of a survey, not a study.
That's what I'm saying, it was a survey, now the person that did it is the person I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm not sure I was a qualified person to do that.
He's making well over more money than you and I were, we're making.
I don't think they're losing anything by trying that, and just from my experience with working with Nancy, I would feel like it's safe in her hands to, yeah. When she definitely is diplomatic about it. I just hate to, yeah, I hate to reward it to someone and then have us be not satisfied, satisfied and not use it. And I've seen it, I mean, we, we spent, the county spent close to a hundred thousand dollars on an EV one, and everybody hated it. You know, and so it's like. I don't know.
Yeah, well, I agree with that, that either one of those proposals, we would have to redirect them. And I'm not sure that would come in anywhere.
I would have to make some phone calls and.
Yeah, and then at what point are we already doing the work anyway?
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I might feel like a lot of work was done in that year with Nancy, with surveys and stuff.
There, you might if I make a comment.
Okay.
Thanks. So, here, here's my observation of this, and I'm actually not surprised by this conversation. My, my tone was a little bit different than what Taylor captured, it was more like, what do we actually want? And is, and is a quote-unquote master plan, which is also known as a comprehensive plan. What fills the want that we have? In my personal strong opinion is it does not. And that's why we're struggling. A comprehensive plan has a whole bunch of elements that are boilerplate standard, and that's what you're getting responses that have all that stuff. We don't need any of that, because we're the most unique town around. We don't do land use planning, because we don't have vast swaths of open land that need to be sold, we can help with. We're not doing economic development and commercial development outside the towns. We don't need a roads and infrastructure look, especially now, given other efforts, so what we, so we don't actually want a master plan. And that was what I was actually getting at, what is it we're trying to accomplish?
Mm-hmm.
As best I can tell, and these are just my words, it's probably a bit wrong, we want some effort put in to help us plan out the recreational opportunities within our town. And if there's other parks that might be on the twelve-item checklist of a complex, there might be some, but the only one I'm really hearing is recreation, so we need a recreation plan. Uh, I don't think we need eight of the other ten major comp plan elements done, because we either have them from the old one, or we have zero intention or relevance of going down those areas, land use. Um, you know, walking trails and stuff, that's gonna depend on the road study, infrastructure, we just, we know we're not gonna do the sewer system in our next lifetime. So I just think we'd, we'd be paying for boilerplate, we'll constantly be fighting them from doing their normal, this is what's in a comp plan, and, you know, that, that's all we know how to do. Could we do a re- a recreation planning document for you? Probably, if they probably wouldn't be interested from a giant company and doing such a small project. And frankly, as you guys are concluding, I think you can do that without a major consulting firm to help you through it anyways. So actually, the threshold issue is, do we need a comp or master plan, or do we need something else that's smaller in scope? You know, I'm hearing that you guys are wanting something smaller in scope.
Yeah, I, I just think we'd need a, a, a document that identifies uh, again, recreation is kind of the main area, I'm thinking, we need, uh, a list of what we're gonna do, so we, as a basis, to go out and try to get money and get everybody to agree that, yeah, we do want ballparks, or we don't want ballparks, we want pickleball or bocce ball. Get people to understand or agree to what we really want to have a recreation, and then, based on that, let's go out and try to find the money.
That's separate from the master plan, this is, I mean, in the best friend saying, like, what we wanted included, there were some things mentioned in the things that were broke down, but going after that money and stuff, what's the point of the master plan is, is for the town council to read it and then be like, okay, now we need to run on how do we get that? And like, yeah, so that is secondary kind of to doing the master plan first.
Yeah, but you, sometimes a, a good company would know how to do that.
Yeah.
They, they would have ideas on how to get money, get grants.
I don't know if that's really gonna be the person that's doing the master plan, like even if we went with these bigger companies that are charging so much, I don't know if they would really be the ones that would give us that full plan that way.
Right, I agree that.
But I agree, finding someone might be very helpful for us, when we get to that point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all for cast from the, not, not going with each complex.
Okay. I am too.
Okay. You wanna make a motion for it, is it?
Oh, I will, when I move to get rid of the. Not accepting any of them, um, and move on with, um, meet sales if we can, I think that would be good.
Try, yeah, try to find a volunteer to do it, yeah.
Go with that one.
What'd you say?
Don't take.
I was learning as I go, thanks for.
So, yeah. So I have, uh, moved not to accept current proposals and look for a volunteer to proceed with the match.
I like that. Okay, okay, second.
Second.
Okay, how in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
procedural abstention.
I think she said aye.
Aye, sorry. Where is the mute button?
Okay, thank you. Motion cap passes.
Well, I'm excited about that.
Okay. Here we go, moving on. Um, the, the financials, I don't know if everybody looked at them, if you have any questions on them? They spent a lot of time on the treasury report, so we should have that, which I do live, thank you very much. Okay. They didn't have any questions, but I.
They're still kind of worthless, but.
Yeah.
They're, they're getting closer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can read them.
I'm getting to the point where I kind of look at that last page, the, um, um, reconciliation notion of it as basically pointless. And would, you could just get rid of it, and it wouldn't hurt anything.
I don't think anyone knows what it does. I don't.
It's, I don't either, and.
And the person who gets it out in the finance board never have no idea.
And that's the problem, is if there's ever kind of a, um, an anomaly on there, like right now, there's an anomaly on there, I couldn't tell you what that problem, I don't know, I don't know what it is. So I hate to, because then there are more like, we need to explain that, I'm just like, no, I can't.
It's a lie, guys, we'll fix it.
So, I know. All right, uh, just quickly go through the agenda for the meeting tonight. Uh, let's see, I think it's pretty straightforward, the same people would, uh, go through the ordinances that did last time, and I don't even remember who did what. Uh, they're all so on prior business. Uh, I think most of them are third reading, a couple of seconds. So, the best way to do it is, you know, there's no changes, so if there's no changes, then you don't need to read it or anything, just explain what it is. So, um, and then on new business, uh, we've got the appropriations one, Kristen will do that. And then we have the resolution on fees, and there were some good questions on that, uh, the fees haven't changed. The only thing we really, really recognized is that we had some people who, we had some batch checks come in for licenses or whatever, but we had nothing that, that charged them a fee. It was in the wa- specific to the water ordinance, but nothing else, so we, we figured that probably should put some kind of an overdraft charge. Because we get charged, so. So, uh, that's really the only change from the last one, it just upstates the resolution, but I think that we should all be good on that. And so, um, who wants to read the resolution? I'll call on somebody. You got it. Kirsten, you don't have anything to read, do you?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm only to roll up, but I don't know. I was just gonna say, Councilman Rock currently doesn't have any.
Oh, that's right, oh, she doesn't.
Okay, I'll read it.
Thank you. True, I appreciate that. Uh, that's the resolution, and then we've got a proclamation for Boyd, and Ron, you're reading that, right?
I can.
Okay. Um, and then the consent items, uh, got a mayor update, which is quite a few things, it's got the citizen participation part. I, there's been a lot of chatter on, on, uh, social media evidently, because people keep sending it to me, um. Uh, we don't know if they'll come or not. So, um, if we get a, a big line of people that wanna sign up to talk, um, we'll try to keep it under control, I've got the timekeepers over at the table. If the best advice is, if it's, um, if they get angry or upset, or they, anything like that, the council has the option to take a recess, which be my, would be my recommendation. And then we'll, um, come down here until the recess is over, and then we'll go back up. Sometimes you can just alleviate any problems by doing that. And through Robert's rules, that's what we need to do, so we can easily do that. Um, I, I just don't know. Who knows, you know?
Fake promises.
Yeah.
Eye contact.
Yeah, I mean, and I, you know, I have no intention of saying anything, so.
Yeah.
So, uh, they'll address the, the meeting, we'll follow the rules, and hopefully we can keep them alive. I just, it's hard to say now that the roads are clear, that. And then just upcoming events, I think that was the only things that, that are random, so, could be a pretty simple meeting. Um, in that, you mentioned the bridge too, in the. Upcoming, we'd better, we'd better set a date. I think we do, we should do it after the next council meeting. We can set it then, if that's okay. Because that, another big thing was people wanted to make sure we did it when people were here.
Yeah.
And I would say, they should be here by me. That will. I, I know, but we probably don't want to do it anyway, there, though, then.
No.
Yeah, so that's everything on that one. Um, any questions on this? So we did have a little bit of a, a board discussion, I put discussion, but it was really a board report. Um, and so I just wanted to kind of talk about each boards, I know the finance board had some stuff.
You want me to do that now?
Yeah, you wanna do that now?
Or from the finance advisory board, supposed to bring to the town council or items, um, two of which have already been discussed.
Okay.
That is the bridges and the targets for reserves on the two, two areas. The other, um, items, the two items to discuss are the road board, whether or not we need a board, or whether or not we want to just go with a, a committee. And the last one is that there's at least one member of the financial advisory, advisory board who would like the town, the town to reduce the tax bill levy from eight to six. And, given that the fire district is gonna take three of it, I don't see that as being much.
I think.
Those are the four items that we were, that I was, Mr. Bray.
Okay.
There is.
So. We talked through some of them, uh, finance board, and he's, or not the finance board, P and Z.
Uh, P and Z, I'm bad.
No, that's right, we don't, we don't have any building permits, okay, so we'll move on from that one, uh, N R E? Anything going on? What's going on?
This is what I came here for. Oh, there you are.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, so Victor, thank you for, for being there.
So, I don't know if you read, uh, Jack Hale's article, but compared between the floods of twenty-eleven and the snowfall in twenty-twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Very similar, and this is what happened in twenty-eleven. Uh. We, when the snow melts from these culverts and that, we need to look at them and make sure they're clear, because roads are gonna be washed out again.
Yeah.
Uh, but so, but, like I said, we have to wait till we can see the, the rocks and the culvert and that, and see if anything's in there, and at that time, I'm sure we really need to get in and clean out some of that. I mean, we'd have volunteers help out with this town, to get in there and do some of this stuff, because if we don't do this, we're gonna be in really big trouble again.
Yeah.
So, I can send it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that would be great, yeah.
I'll send, yeah, when I get home, I'll, I'll send it out.
We have this, yeah.
And I just, I just didn't want to bring that up, so, because it's gonna be a couple months, and it's already headed in that direction.
It, it hits sixty tomorrow, and for the rest of the week.
But he's, he's calling it out, he's saying it right here, it's the same equivalent, no amounts, weather, everything.
Okay. Yeah, that would be great. No, I'm glad you have that.
The concern is of, um, of flooding and all the.
Flooding and all the repercussions.
It went from June to July. So that's now the twenty eleven. This, this was in the Wednesday papers, Barbeli. No, it was last, I think it was last Wednesday. That's what interviews up.
I hear Victor, I I besides culvers, I think. Green Canyon may come right down the road.
Yeah, that's true.
And so I I sent a me text to to Kurt asking what HOA is gonna do. I'm not sure. If bro ditch is gonna flood, but. Um they may have to put sand piles across Green Canyon, that pine or. To move it off the road into the road ditch or whatever, so. I'm kind of worried about that, if even the uh. Aspen Hills Pond might might be a problem, so. I'm not sure, the town is to watch real carefully, the whole thing, you know. Or re- remember that both Green Canyon and Prater Canyon. Our Forest Service in the county has a. Agreement with the Forest Service, so anybody may wanna contact the county.
So, oh, they're very involved. Already, so um. We can keep doing boards and then we'll, um I'll go, we can go on to the flooding discussion. Other boards, the the water board.
Hey Matt, I I didn't I didn't attend that meeting, did you get to that meeting or not?
Um I listened to it.
And I haven't heard back.
We have it on Zoom, I mean. So um. Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, I listened to it, I don't know. Uh yeah, I don't, I don't know, if they they didn't really discuss that much, I guess. But the one thing I wanted to say about the water board, I looked back historically at the water board. And up until two years ago, they were only meeting once a year. And um. And that was it, and they would look at any kind of, you know, all of our projects. Look at what projects we can should be asking for money the following year, and so they didn't really, they never got involved in the day to day stuff. So I um. So maybe that's an option for the water board is to go back, so they were originally put in ordinance in twenty ten officially. But they've had a group of people that always work together on the water. They're back when the from when the town was formed. So um. You know, I mean, that's another option, maybe it doesn't make sense for them to meet every month, maybe it does make more sense to be periodically.
Why aren't we wanting them to meet every month?
Well, like, what do they do?
Well, are they harming?
No, okay, no.
Well, the only reason I ask is because like. When we talked last time, we were thinking of like getting. Like maybe we should just eliminate them, I kind of feel like that might be a little extreme, because. I feel like they're maybe being. And if we don't know of it yet, I'm.
But that, I mean, that, yeah, I just think that's an option, instead of.
Touch, but do you have a list of the people that wanna be on the board?
Um Martin, Marty, Marty does.
So who, besides Lee and Marty, who else, is there three people wanna be?
I did have a third one, but he decided not to.
So are we gonna let the board pick first or whatever, or what, how they gonna?
I get to pick.
So they come to you and say, we prefer Lee or Marty, you won't follow their recommendation or what?
Uh I haven't historically, the council gets to pick who they want. Well, historically, until this situation. We would put out a flyer to the entire town. And then we would, I would interview the the candidates, and then we would pick who the best candidates were. This is the first time I ever had a board, I think, come to me and say, oh, this, you have to put this person on the board. So. Usually we have a little more input, so um I mean, we could do that. But I think that my biggest concern, and I talked to Lee about it yesterday, is let's figure out what they're doing. And how often they're going to meet, that makes the most sense. Because having four people and or three people, I mean, four people or five doesn't really. Change their function and they're still have a quorum. Right?
Is there somebody else coming off or not, I can't remember if somebody else is coming off or not.
No, I don't know, I'd have to look on the webpage.
Go look, look, so.
You get to know that, Ron.
Well, I looked at a couple of months ago and then I uh forgot.
Yeah, I don't remember who stays on. And who doesn't, so. But I can let you know, it's on the webpage, if you just go.
I I can find it there, so I. I was kinda hoping to see some minutes before I called. Young up as his going on, but I haven't seen.
He didn't send those to you?
No.
Oh, I have them.
Um currently, we have uh Terry and Steven are up for renewal in June.
Oh, so we have two people up in June. That's not that far away, isn't it? We'll be doing everybody in June, so. Yeah, interesting. So Terry and Steve, he must not have been on very long. We just put him on. Oh, he took cancel, did he take cancel space, place, okay, all right, I.
Was Steve Young or was Frank, Frank Young, right, Steve?
Yeah, it's Frank. Hold on, let me write myself a note. So you need the minutes for their meeting?
Yeah, I well, I'll just call Frank and see if I can get him, so.
Okay, well, I can, I've got him. So. But that's a thought, maybe they didn't meet as much or whatever they wanna do, but. Like I said, historically, that's how they've done it.
Okay.
Which seemed to work just fine. Okay, uh let's talk about flooding, so this is where we at, yesterday we had a house. Uh this kind of building a hole and they got a little water running in their front yard, so the guys went down and tried to help them. Do that, um and that was on Vista, oh, that's on East Forest. Actually, the house is on, their address is North Forest, but it's down at the bottom of the hill, so. Um other than that, we really haven't had anything yet, other than a lot of water on the roads. Um there was a county meeting this morning. And um at that meeting, they just went through the protocol. Two things that, there's two things that we have to make sure our residents know, first of all, they need to sign up for code red. Which is just like our texting program, only they need to go to the towns or to the website, so I'll talk about it tonight, to the county website. And then um that way they can keep informed on what's going on. And then the second part of that is um sandbags. So we have now sand across the street by the first response building. Um and we won't get the bags until tomorrow, the county's going to deliver the bags to us. And so we'll have those tomorrow, we bought a couple of shovels. And so we'll send a call out to looking for um volunteers. The only thing we have to do for our liability is we have to make sure that we have their name and their phone number and their address. So we know who they are, and that would be in case we have a real flood and we have to declare an emergency, so. So we just need to get information from those people.
Which people?
The volunteers.
Well, okay.
If we have volunteers and our sand and bags will be available for people in the whole area and not just town. So since it's furnished by the county, so. So I'll talk about that tonight.
So even even the HOAs are not gonna come get it?
Of course.
Me, obviously don't want them to take it all, but yes. Uh whatever they need, and we'll get more if we need more. So we'll have a couple of shovels over there, um the other thing I wanted to talk about, and I was glad that Victor brought this up, is we have this wonderful document that we paid a lot of money for. It's called the surface water study. And it has all of the flood plains in the town. So it's here, if somebody wants to hang out and look at it, it talked about Broditch. Uh it talks about all of them, Cedar Creek. Uh Green Canyon, Prater. So um anyway, it kind of gives you an idea, if you know people in those areas, but. People are welcome to come in and look at this, and I'll talk about it tonight, I just can't take it, cause it's only property of the town. So uh but it's pretty interesting, Broditch goes right across. Where does it end up, it ends up at at Hardman, I think.
Well, it it goes around through a bunch of lot, it comes out.
Ton of property, yeah.
And it ends up uh in the pond on number thirteen green, that goes down the town uh. A little little ditch down the. South side of Vista.
Yep.
Until it's across town, then it turns south and goes down. And uh. If it gets too much water in that that bit of uh. The doctor's house was sold last year, he'll get flooded from Road Ditch.
Well, I think Brod goes across. Uh it doesn't come down here. It goes straight over to, yeah, goes across all those properties from Green Canyon all the way to um Hardman, right by the Hardman Bridge.
No, it makes a loop, it comes back. Uh by Vista, number thirteen green there, about halfway down Vista.
I don't think that's part of Rogue Ditch.
No, not according to all of the maps.
Oh.
It doesn't. That's a different one.
That's the road ditch I'm aware of.
Yeah, but we're, yeah, also in this document, it has all of the culverts, so we know, they know where they all are. And one of them is by Brodick. And there is quite a few concerns up there, so. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, we're. We're trying to stay on top of it, but we're doing the best we can. Uh let's see, and the last thing I wanted to quickly talk about is open meeting and public. Open records and public meetings, we need to talk about this, you know, with the uh staff. Um for their electronic devices, so there's a couple of things going on in the state, there's some county commissioners. On the east side of the state that got themselves in a little bit of trouble. By sending text messages and making decisions over text messages. And you don't do that. And so I just wanted to remind everyone, um when you're sending, and I know some of you have wondered why I send your emails, uh blind copying. Because if I don't, it creates a quorum. And we can't do that, and so it doesn't matter whether it's on your phone or on your email. You just you just have to be really careful and just think about, okay, if I'm sending this to more than. You know, myself and two other people, I've created a quorum, and so you just wanna be careful, blind copy, so they're not doing reply all. I mean, the same on your cell phone. And the interesting thing about it is these commissioners got in a little bit of trouble. Um because they're using their personal cell phones, but because they were working in the capacity of a county commissioner. That personal cell phone now becomes a public cellphone, so anything that's on your phone is public record, so. Uh you know, again, we had, just have to be careful, and I'm the worst, I mean, I'll send you guys a text and after I'm like, I should not have done that. Usually it'll be something simple like, oh, there's a meeting time, or I don't care if the public sees it. But um it's now become an issue again, so we'll make sure, and that goes if it's a. It becomes a public meeting if you do that, so anyway, just a reminder, I had to remind the staff. And your email is 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 public, your town email, I don't know, everybody knows. So just make sure that you're not deleting stuff, that you're archiving stuff. And and then we'll all be happy, and for me, I mean, I use it on, I use my email on my phone too. Yeah, so I can keep track of everything that's going on, but I'm very aware that. I could lose my phone privileges and they would look at what I shot for, I don't know, but anyway, just be careful.
So it's only your B C C, it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not the.
Yeah, it's when. And sometimes I'm lazy and I won't, and I'm like, oh, gosh, you gotta do that, so yeah, so yeah. Just again, we wanna make sure that we're keeping everybody out of trouble, so. So that's my lecture on open records and. It's just now, and I can tell you a few years ago. This, and this was a big deal, cause the town ended up getting sued, Jackson. The mayor replied to a text message during the council meeting. And a resident wanted to see it and he refused, and of course, they hired an attorney. And he had to turn over his phone, and it was a message to his daughter, very innocent. But you know, it's just. Yeah, it's crazy, but just be careful.
Yeah, don't, don't take phone calls and don't answer text messages during.
During a public meeting, okay. Yeah, it seems like I have to talk about this a lot, but I had to talk about with staff too. Keep your private crap off of it.
Clear to them.
Yes, she did.
Don't use your personal devices for town business unless you want everybody to know what your personal business is.
Yeah, so, yes. And you're, and not use your per, your town phone for personal business.
I did have a question, so, cause I know this is. Gonna come up, Vista is already pretty rough, so. Is there any way that we could do it this year, I know that he was saying like. I mean, can we at least try? For the water and the road, well, that's what I was suggesting.
So when that water project gets started, I don't know if you've noticed the rest of the water projects, it's not a one year deal. That one in particular is probably gonna be at least.
So I think. So Kurt, are you asking, should we just tear it up now?
Yeah, I mean, like, why are we delaying that inevitable, if if there's nothing.
Well, no, not to rip up the asphalt.
Yeah, we could, we could hire somebody to. To repaint or to mill that.
I mean, should we just do it?
They're spending all the money to. Doing all the patching, it's like.
Yeah, I'm like. I know, Marty, you do this all the time.
I do. It's already a slow.
It is.
Well, you're, you're, you're talking about. Taking the asphalt off of this and replacing with gravel.
I mean, I don't know.
Till the water project is finished, yeah.
Isn't even gonna get started till next year.
How much replace it, what you have to do?
So then, I wonder what the. When. When we have rough weather. Uh and when we have plowing, what that does to the gravel base for Vista, does it? Do we get, do we get a benefit out of ripping up the concrete other than saving costs on? On cold patching?
It would be easier to maintain.
Any kind of an engineer or.
No, basically, what they would be able to do is actually create an actual base on that road, cause what's but there now. It's not really a base, they just kind of paved over what was existing, so it would have a better base, which means it would drain a lot better, which means that it wouldn't pothole it.
And so if it's. Water, when the water project gets going, if we do it, if we start it next year. We're looking at three years.
Yep.
Um so four years of gravel road.
I don't know if it's gonna be any worse, I feel like it could be better, so that's why I would.
It sounds like we're no worse off, the only way we're gonna be. We're worse off and it's more personal than for the town is that. I have to go a different way in my Harley when I leave. Cause I'm not. Gravel up in my Harley. Both my bridges are out, so you can't go out that way either.
Whatever potholes do happen on a gravel road are a lot easier to pick up.
And I just think it would still be cheaper to.
Just since we be one citizen, I'd recommend going that way, because uh. The the other people I talk to in in that part of the town. Are pissed.
That's the only solution, I mean, we're gonna tear it out the minute they start that water.
Test me when you do that too.
Well, I did do that when we did this east and west, so. But we didn't have a choice, yeah.
The sooner you get on it, the sooner you're gonna get these road based out in there.
Yeah.
Right. Hey, I do it, I mean, I'm.
Sounds to me like that's the way to go. You know, it just means.
And we would only do, we would do from Vista East. To. Right here, or at least. Yeah, cause the water project goes from Vista East to Vista West.
And I'll just.
So from here.
Down your road to get out.
Yeah, okay.
Whenever I have issues with my bike, I can stop in, you know.
I do think that would be a little happier, cause I just, I I seriously got stopped twice. On this this day. Gonna get a new car, I think. Recognize my car. And very, they're, I mean, they're very nice, but you can tell they're like, you're gonna do something right, and I'm like.
Yeah, and it was a recommendation last year too, from the roads department, that they're tired of throwing cold patch down on it. Pocketfuls of stuff out there, and it just doesn't.
It's still huge.
And because, and it's the same situation, but anytime it gets rough like that. Yeah, the road is sinking, it's because they didn't start off with a good foundation, and.
And that thing has been there, I don't know. Probably back. I was putting the same time they did. The other, and then we put chip cell over it, cause the engineer, different engineer than this one. Thought thought it would help and it didn't.
So when would that be something that we?
Soon you can find company that would do it. A bail usually is who we would probably use locally, and I don't know how busy they would be. Be a matter of they would come and they would mail the asphalt off and then bring in some road base, build a road, and if it was a matter of um. We could, I don't know that our guys would have the times, we would want to contract.
Yeah, I would contract it, they don't.
But they could come and.
I mean, they end up having to um pay contractors anyway to move the dirt and all that stuff, so it doesn't make sense to have.
Yeah, especially Mary has stuff to do.
Budget, but.
Well, that's what I was wondering. That would be a big question to throw back to the, our public works director to see if he could find out if someone could do it, first of all. And second of all, how much it's gonna cost.
But would, do we have any money in this year's budget to do this?
There you go.
We do.
I would get Willie to tell us.
Yeah.
Until the road project starts sometime next summer, two options, keep fixing it as best you can, or tear it up. Give us the cost of each, and when you could get it done, and I'll look in the budget for somebody.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, cause we've. I could tell you probably three or four houses worth of vision patch every year, and it's, how do you have about two thousand dollars?
It's a sixty, it'll be a lot cheaper to keep town going. It won't just be very good, so.
Yeah.
Says it's a hundred thou, if he comes back with probably a hundred thousand dollars, and they can't get it done till June, well, then you're losing three months or two months. Anyways, we, when can we get done, how much is it, and then we can, you guys can quickly weigh it against.
And keep throwing.
Patch building the holes.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll bet we can find the money, but if it's a hundred thousand dollars, you know, it's sort of a bigger question, we'll just find it.
Well, they're gonna have to do it when they do the water project, but then that comes out of the water project money.
Maybe, yeah.
Well, it's not part of the.
Um, we, we plan on doing it after the water project just finished, I think asphalt is what we talked about quite a few times. Now, the only thing the water project will do is pay for, so if we leave it the way it is, and we let the, the water project go pay for the patching. Uh, on the side of the road if they disturb it, otherwise.
So theoretically, the water would, would cost a little bit less, more patching pavement every time they move.
I don't, I mean, and I'll just make it worse.
I wouldn't count it.
Yeah. But yeah, we won't get any.
We'll see what Willie says, can be done quick and not for a arm and a leg, then we'll find the money somewhere. Well, you got it, I think we do. Yeah, and Jim, when we just look at. Not just the reserve, I might have the operating.
This year.
Yeah.
That we're in.
Cause if it takes six months to get this done, well, then you're, you're almost, you know, you're limiting the benefit from the whole idea.
Yeah, yeah.
I just felt like some of what we've been doing with snow and everything, I mean, I know it's inevitable, you get people that are upset. Some of it, they do have a reason to be upset, and so if we can aid them seeing us trying, I think that would go a long way.
Yeah, but even with the potholes right now, I mean, as long as they're full of water. That doesn't do it, you put it in, and then it pumps right out.
Well, yeah.
They'll come along and sell your products that you, you can throw it into a wet hole and it'll work.
I saw them do that in Jackson, and a week later, they were all, it was all out, they were, everything was bad.
That's why I'm being like, long term, we would have to take it out anyway.
You gotta take it out anyways, so.
Full of water, won't see the hole.
Honestly, yeah. I'll just. And it, it's a matter of, okay, let's do it.
Yeah.
I mean, at some point, you've gotta.
Cost effective, I agree, I don't want us just blowing money and doing foolish things, but if it's something that we're gonna pay for anyway, and if we.
Yeah, we got to do it sooner.
Should.
Yeah.
Should put the cost on the water project. And you get a basin, it's gonna be solid, you got to fix it up.
Yeah, you'll have a good.
It's gonna cut down your cost on putting the asphalt on top of it, when that happens.
Cause even if it came to the, that, if we just let the water project do what it needs to, and they get out of there and they're gone. And then we're going back to it, we still have to go through that process, and so you have to pull it out and put a road base down.
Yeah, we do.
Now, with Vista, I mean, to repair it, right, you may have to dig down three or four feet to put a basin there, you just can't, they take it off and bring in six inches of gravel, cause that's.
Correct.
I mean, a real room, a real base might take, you know, half a million dollars, just, just to, you know.
Is that what Willie can kind of look at, though, those costs?
Oh, well, it's, it also, can you do that kind of, can you? Is it wise to do that kind of work in the peak of the season or? They would normally not do it in April major. The longer the road bases down, the more solid it gets before you put it on top of it. Yeah, I just worry about doing it during. Yeah.
Yep, hey, I like it, good. Uh, last thing is the sun rock expansion and asphalt plant.
Okay.
Uh, I just became aware that there is a plan up to expand a gravel pit, add a asphalt. Manufacturing piece, a concrete manufacturing piece at some point, just north of um. Approximately where the. Yes, incorrect, but where the your airstream was.
Right there, yeah. There's already a gravel pit there, so they wanna expand it.
And that will have some, from the town's perspective, we've talked about, we wanna maintain the rural area. Want to maintain the naturalness of the air, and then if you look at Highway eighty-nine, that is a seating byway. And that doesn't fit in to that plan, so the question is, does the town wanna do anything official? About opposing it, or do we wanna just see, see what the people have to say?
I'm also opposing it, but I think you're very, I knew that, so. Yeah, I mean, as far as the, the statutes go, we have the authority to um, get involved if it's a half mile from town, not three miles. So I don't know if the town council wants to come out um, against something like that, or it's not, sorry.
Um, I don't know, like, part of what got my attention with it was just from other material I've um, read. That is pretty recent, it's saying like, within a five-mile radius, it's like a very toxic area then. And to me, when they're saying we're three miles, it's a little unnerving. And we have amazing water here, and I'm a little scary of like, where that.
I was worried about the water, but, but, yeah.
Well, the air first, but I mean. I might also wonder why they're leaving Salt Lake, is it already a dead zone down there? Are they still going?
Yeah, that's.
That's not the one, what it's about, is it?
No, no, that's the one, it's in Springville.
Okay.
It's in the Spanish word, I think, in Springville, it's south. And they're, they're not leaving, they, they already own this, they also are gonna play in Rock Springs. Yeah, you, you know, the challenge, and I had mentioned this to Taylor, is I think last year, we had to get our asphalt out of Idaho Falls. Which was extremely expensive. Um, and so evidently, there's no asphalt plant in the valley, so they would service us in Jackson.
Well, I thought that was one in Freedom, but I was, isn't there a plant?
There was, Whiteout had a hot plant in Alpine when they were doing the road, but that's gone, it's a portable plant, so. But, so I don't, you know, I don't know, but that's why they're expanding, I mean, there's a need, obviously, they wouldn't do it, so.
Well, that also goes with the rural area, like, I totally agree, like, it's expensive, but if we're putting that here, then it's not gonna be used, so. But if it is a distribution and sell point, I don't know if it's just a plant, do they sell out of?
Sure.
Like, to us.
They sell cement.
I feel like the pros, like, that was like the only thing to think of. Yeah, so I don't know.
So I mean, we could do a resolution, and we'd have to pass it and send it to the county commit, or to the planning and zoning, I don't know what they're doing.
I think we would need to get more information and maybe discuss this a bit further at the next workshop.
Yeah.
So they're going on the nineteenth.
Of this month?
Yeah.
So really, the best way, I think, is for the citizens to participate in that, holding in the town, the council officially, is my opinion, I don't know how anything else goes, so. Since they don't really care what we think, it's more than a half a mile.
So I think we can agree that the valley needs an asphalt plant.
I don't agree.
I mean, where we're gonna get the asphalt?
Where we get it already, it's like, we've already paid that amount of money, I think we just continue that.
Yeah.
It's not, pros don't outweigh the cons, I think, to it.
There's, there's not been that, in that spot, there's not been that spot. I- is there another spot in the valley? Uh, I'm sure there's gravel everywhere, there'll be more.
Well, they're not gonna.
Due to the economic development of the valley.
They own the land.
Yeah, it's an existing gravel pit, they're just gonna expand it.
I mean, there's gotta be permitting and things like that, that have already gone into this, I just feel like, I don't have enough information to make a decision, one way or the other, and with the paving that's. In the long-range Y O dot plan for eighty-nine, that's supposed to go all the way to Afton, I mean, maybe it factors into that somehow, I, I just don't. There's just not enough information.
Yeah, I don't like the mobile plant that.
Yeah, Whiteout usually, well, they brought in their own.
Yeah, before.
The contractor did.
Yeah.
But yeah, I don't know, I mean, but I definitely think the citizens, if they're against it, they need to let their voices be heard. Might be head in the camera, or Afton, it's probably in Afton.
It's in uh, well, it's in camera and they're like. Something.
I have been to the camera many times to these meetings.
I was surprised that they didn't come to Afton to do it, but.
That's the county seat, yeah. So that could be. Yeah, yeah.
And so as on town council, can I still, like, appear and speak?
Why don't you say I'm representing the governor?
No, definitely not.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I've been to, I've been to several of those, we've had some other interesting things come up, but they were within our boundary, and so.
And I didn't.
We've been able to get done.
To like the economic development boards that was in Cokeville, that they did the thing. But I do feel like our valley, this is becoming a regular occurrence, especially with the Atona area, where. I think that maybe um, suggesting to the commissioners that we need some.
Yeah, that's your county planning office, and so what it does, everything goes to the county planning office, and then it goes to the county commissioners. But I would definitely, it, it does feel like everything.
Yeah, don't they have a new county planner within the last year?
Yes.
We do. We do, but I, I can tell you, my last ED meeting, there were, a lot of the mayors were really upset about what they're allowing. And um, within their, close to their boundaries, and I mean, we talked specifically, cause we were discussing housing. And how they're allowing uh, multifamily housing where there's no sewer. And so that was what they were concerned about, but I, I think that, you know, you have to let your voice hurt, because they're allowing. They're allowing it in Atona, where they don't have any sewer, so, and it makes no sense, when you've got sewer and thing, you got sewer in Afton, and you've got a sewer system in Alpine. There are other places the county can approve it, and force them to uh, to be connected to sewer, so.
That will be up before the.
Yeah.
Planning, planning board, the county just down Clark Lane, a little bit.
Yeah, I've heard about that. Instead of Mark or Dick, but, but still.
Of course, I think it's like, I mean, with a lot better word than legacy, that they're kind of looking, I don't think there is much of one. That they're looking ahead, like, what do we want our valley?
You mean this highway, you know, my, my asphalt, is that what you mean? Cause it does.
Yeah. I think it's more just like, like, what do we want our valley known for? I don't want it known for plants and.
They do have hope with the new, the new, yeah, uh, planning and zoning.
Really, okay.
The director, yeah.
Director, sure.
Yeah, he's good, and he understands why everybody's so frustrated with them, so, yeah, go to the meeting, okay.
Many recommends may not be what the county commissioners.
That's true, and they've done that to us, when we had the one-mile radius. Like that. Okay, yeah, the storage units, that was one. Yeah, sorry, okay, uh, it's gonna recess, you guys like over?
Recess, speeding until seven o'clock.
Move to second, I'll say hi.
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 Who, who seconded, sorry, I missed it.
I did.
Okay, round it, hey, um, see you guys soon. Forty-five, no, a little over an hour. Go have dinner.
So.
See ya.